Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board of June 25, 2024. This meeting is going to begin shortly. An executive session. And after that, we will return to the public session without any further delay or interruption. Because this is a hybrid meeting, I'm reading the following notice into the record. This is the formally advised as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, June 25, 2024, at 5:00 PM, beginning with executive session and then opening to the public no sooner than 6:00 in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below, and that public access information can be found on our website. It shows you how to join by computer or by telephone. So I am going to make a motion that the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen enter into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 21, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation involving Blue Sky Towers, Rumor Number 3 LLC, 1044 Route 28, South Yarmouth, and two collective bargaining, which if held at open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the public body, and the chair so declares. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Joyce?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So we stand in executive session. It will be till approximately 6:00 PM or shortly thereafter, as long as it takes to conclude those particular, those two particular matters, and we will come straight forward to the public portion of our meeting. Thank you. Welcome to the public portion of the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board of June 25, 2024. We're running a little bit late tonight. We started an executive session at 5:30 with the expectation we would be done about 6:00, so we're a little bit behind. We thank you for your patience. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, we take our agenda out of order and do the scholarship presentation at this time and then go back to announcements and public comments after.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Mark?
Yes, aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye, on this end.
I vote aye as well. So we are advancing the Yarmouth Scholarship Committee presentation of scholarships. My understanding that the gentleman that does this is unavailable tonight, Dr. Kerr, and Tracy Post, who I believe was on this committee for many years and has a deep interest in this particular matter, is going to stand in for him and tell us about all the wonderful things that have been accomplished by our graduating class of 2024. And we're really happy to recognize these very deserving scholarships.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored to do this. Tom Kerr has been the chair of the committee for many, many years, and he's unable to be with us tonight, so he's really done all the work. I'm just, I just get to give out the checks. How great is that? So he has submitted a letter that I'm going to read for the public's benefit, and then I'll go up to the podium with Dr. Smith, and we will disperse the scholarships. On behalf of the town of Yarmouth, we welcome all who gather to, of the award recipients here. It is indeed a very special event in the life of the town. Tonight, we continue that great Yarmouth tradition as we are distributing scholarship awards to deserving students that also represent many families who work so closely with them to help them achieve their success. This is the 29th year for the town of Yarmouth that they've sponsored scholarship program for students residing in the town who are attending some type of post-secondary educational institution. As we note each year, we can all be proud of the town for establishing and supporting this most worthy endeavor, honoring our students. And so on behalf of the prior recipients, and especially the class of 2024, we thank the Select Board and town residents for their ongoing support and look forward to continuing this worthwhile and impactful process. The committee overseeing the program is comprised of five members. Select Board Member Peter Q. Smith, who's here tonight, our new superintendent, Dr. Mark Smith, who's also here, community members, Sandra Rubenstein, Danielle Hayward, and Dr. Tom Kerr. We all want to acknowledge not only the important work of the committee members, but also the support provided by the town administrative team, Pam Barnes and Anne Marie Ellis, to be specific. This year, we were able to distribute $50,000 to the scholarship winners, and the funds come from the Frederick E. Howe Scholarship, as well as the Town of Yarmouth Scholarship Fund. We are grateful for both, and especially to the citizens of the town for their voluntary and generous support and contributions to the scholarship program each tax year. We have a record number of 45 recipients, and it's the largest and most accomplished group of applicants we have had to review. Congratulations to you and your families for your success thus far, and we wish you continued success in the years ahead. To date, we have distributed $620,300 to 761 students. Again, on behalf of all past and present recipients, we thank you, the Select Board and the residents. The selection process and award, awarding of various amounts of the scholarship fund is based on specific criteria: personal statements, need, recommendation, community involvement, and academic success. This process reveals to us the substance and quality of the student that helps us realize the importance of scholarship on their lives and the students and their families. Each of the students fully appreciate and sacrifice, the sacrifices their families are making towards their educational goal, and you, as family members, should be especially proud of the achievements of your student. We ask the applicants this year to respond to the virtue they found most significant in their lives. Powerful responses made us realize how thoughtful and focused these students are as they progress along their journeys. We encourage each to remain curious and ask those questions, leading in new learning and adventures. We know from their responses, they're resilient after facing challenges from COVID and financial burdens, yet they have moved forward and thrived. They all work at least one job and have had several, had three to contribute to their dreams. Each applicant was clear they wanted to contribute and give back to the community as volunteers, mentors, or coaches. We can be proud of their interest in staying connected to the core values they so clearly cherish. Some of the examples of the, of the applicants. Community service shows me we can make great changes in the world we live and make it better for everyone. I hope I learn something new every day. Authenticity guides my interactions with everyone and enables me to navigate through lives with integrity. Being honest has enabled me to build transparent and trusting relationships. Respect is an essential virtue that transcends boundaries. Expectations are extremely high and pushing us all harder to our limits, and humor is there to ease the tensions. It works to bring us joy into people's lives. And finally, I ask you to continue with my family's unfulfilled dream that I carry on my shoulders, and with your help, our efforts will not be in vain. This scholarship is more than financial aid. It is the rain that nourishes the seed of potential within me. In the spirit of great curiosity they all possess and work ethic so evident in their lives, I would like to share a short poem from a great Cape poet, Mary Oliver. Tell me, what will you do with your one wild and precious life? Mary Oliver, we all can't wait to see. With that, I ask Dr. Smith to join.
If no, if no one has an objection, I'll probably get one question from this panel. Of all of you together, we could ask.
We'll do it at the end. We'll get everybody up here at the end with the board. I thought we heard, okay.
Hi, Peter.
How are you doing?
Good. So our first recipient is Gabrielle Elves. Gillian Arden. Alexa Barbosa. Nora Batar.
Congratulations.
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 Aiden Bullock. Is, and Luke?
I'm sorry they couldn't be here, they're both working.
And Luke is yours too. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Great. Antonio Calle, these might be a little bit out of order. I have Delaney Burell. Elena Costano. Allison Edwards. Emily Edwards. Madeline Edwards. Okay. Ashlyn Enright.
Thank you.
Cullen Enright.
That's my brother.
He's not working.
He's at work? Good, good, good. And Owen Enright. Whoops, throwing money around here. Thanks, Peter. Alexander Ferreira. Frank Hernandez Cortez. Rosanna Jo Kim. Congratulations. All right. Leona Longabardi. Congratulations. Nina Mako. Tori Ann Metheny. Ryan Neto. Shane Lineham. Stephanie Shoner. Ellen Swanson. Lucy Swanson. Emily Texera. Ella Terrio. Willania Thompson. Said names correctly. If I didn't, I apologize. Brecken Viera. Michelle Wu? Okay. Is she working? I'm just kidding. It's okay. Lucy Young.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anthony Zianelli. Zeninelli? Did I say it wrong? I'm sorry. Thank you. And that concludes it. If we could get a picture with all the recipients and Dr. Smith and the board members up here, like Dr. Kerr requested it, please. Just for everybody at home, we'll make sure they get these. And the thing about this scholarship is you can apply every year you're in school. It's not just for the graduating class. Please come back home. Thank you for being here.
Best wishes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tracy. Great job. And thank you, Dr. Smith, for your participation. I feel to acknowledge former Selectman Peter Q. Smith, who was here. He was on the committee as well, and if I knew he was coming tonight, I would have announced his appearance. Next item is announcements. We have any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. Okay, public.
I have one.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to be holding office hours, but I don't have the full schedule yet, but I just wanted to say for the month of July, I'll be here an hour before the posted meeting time and use that as office hours for July. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
From the historic village of Bass River.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Dominic Canello from the very historic town of Yarmouth in this wonderful village of Bass River. Mr. Chairman, it was just about a month ago that we had a very historic election here in town, and it was kind of exciting. I was able to participate. I learned a lot. And there was, we had a nice little forum down at the cultural center, and there was a comment made by somebody that our town had one of the worst two wells on Cape Cod. Well, I disagree with that, and I think we all know who owns the label of the worst wells, and it's not Yarmouth. We have 24 great wells here in town. We do have some contamination in them, but that's to our own device because we allowed that to happen. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone got the message that our wells here in town are not the worst on Cape Cod. I also learned a few other things, Mr. Chairman, as I was walking around the community, talking to people. And as you know, we have a library issue. Everyone likes their libraries. We enjoy our libraries. I think we're all in agreement that there's not enough library space. So we're going to be hopefully developing a committee, and I would urge everyone to come down here and come to the podium on Selectmen's meeting and make a comment. Maybe once a month, you can have a library day. I don't know. But we definitely need some more space. We heard Mr. Scott talk about 26,000 square feet, which is a great amount of space, which we don't have, and I think we need to close the book on the library. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
I got your pun there. That was good.
Anyone else for public comment?
Norm has his hand up.
Who?
Norm on, on.
Oh, Norm Holcomb. Norm, you with us? We see your hand raised.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Norm.
Well, thank you for recognizing me. First of all, congratulations to Tracy and, and Joyce. I know you both will work your tails off for the Select Board, and I'm glad to see you there. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm delighted to see the investment policy on your agenda. And I made a comment at the town meeting, and I must apologize to Mr. Rittenhour. I based my comment about how much investment income the town get has on the 2022 audited report. He corrected me. I said we had about $100,000 of interest in, or investment income. He corrected me in saying it was over a million. He was correct. The 2023 investment or annual report, audited report, is online now, and it shows, I think, and Bob could correct me, a million four or a million five of investment income. So that's great to see. One point regarding that, that is unscheduled income. That income could have been applied to cover the override, so we would not have had to have an override if the investment income had been used. It could not be budgeted for because it was only one year's worth. But had, had the Select Board looked at that as a source of free cash, it would have been a way to cover the override without asking the voters to approve one. The second point regarding the investment is that what it seems to lack is accountability. There is no way, way shown in the recommendations to, to audit or check on what is being done. The Finance Committee should be charged with the responsibility of receiving reports on investment income and on investments made and on how much cash and reserves there are available that are not yet invested and why they are not invested. There are tens of millions of dollars on the town's books, tens of millions of dollars, $20 million in various funds, safety funds that could be invested. That's an awful lot of money. And besides that, there are lots of other funds available in the general fund, in the golf funds, and elsewhere, that should be invested conservatively, but for the town's benefit. And there needs to be accountability to be sure that the town is, is getting full benefit of, of investing every dime that it is, that it can. The second point I'd like to make is with regard to water quality. I sent the board an email this morning. I'm not going to go through the details of that. I'm sure that a radio announcer will read that on the air. But the recommendations that I made are something that I'd like to state publicly. The town uses federal and state guidelines to evaluate the quality of our water. So there are federal and state guidelines that say, for example, that nitrates should not be over X parts per million of water, of, in our water system. And PFAs or PFAs should not be over another X amount of parts per million. And, but what that is saying is that those amounts are below that are allowable. That, to me, is a sacrilege. What it's saying is that under federal and state guidelines, it's, it's okay to have some pollution in our water. I think we need zero tolerance. We need to say we want our water pure. We don't want the federal and state guidelines. They don't know what happens to our liver, heart, brain as a result of the additional things that are in our water that they say are allowable. Our Select Board needs to take leadership on this. Insist on zero tolerance. Ask our DPW director to, to develop the cost of removing all nitrates and all PFAs from our water, right down to zero. Ask him to get that cost, and then put that before town meeting. Give the residents a chance to choose what quality water they want. It should not be a Select Board decision. It shouldn't be a DPW manager's decision. It should not be Bob Rittenhour's decision. It should be the residents' decision as to how pure they want their water. Secondly, look at all the regulations that exist in town as to what the allowable, I'm going to call it pollution levels, are for new developments. You'll be surprised to find out that health department regulations allow substantially higher amounts of pollution to go into our water than even the state and federal regulations Ask our town administrator to come up with all those regulations and to reduce those amounts down to zero for any new development of, any new commercial development or multi-unit residential development that is not hooked up to the sewer system. Don't allow any additional pollution to go into our aquifer. The last thing is with regard to our sewers plant, insist, again, on zero tolerance. No PFAs should come out of that water, no nitrates in excess of zero. Ask our, our DPW director, Jeff Colby, he's a great guy. He's smart, he's resourceful. And ask him to develop the cost of getting those pollutants down to zero. If, if, if we know what the cost is, then the town residents at town meeting can make a decision based upon recommendations from the town. But it's not right that the Select Board sits back and allows some level of pollutants to go back into our aquifer from that sewer treatment plant. It should be zero. So those are my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I don't know if I'm in the right spot here, but I have a public comment on the Free Bird.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I have a public comment on the Free Bird. Is that part of it?
I mean, you, you can say it now, but there will be a public hearing.
Okay, so I'm a butter to the property, and we're just against the, the noise that's gonna--
Can you identify yourself for the--
Yes, my name is William Warnock.
William?
Yeah, William Warnock, W A R N O C K, 49 Anastasia Road. We've had plenty of issues with the music room. I don't think we need any more issues. We're in a residential area, and I would hope this board would consider the neighbors and realize that we have been inconvenienced between the, the park, the blow-up thing for the kids. When I moved here, there was no park, there was no music room, there was no Free Bird. It was nice and quiet. Every year, it's getting worse and worse. And I just wanna have it on the record that we are against it, and I know there's a few more people in this room that are also against it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good cheers.
So I know you're dying to make a comment that you generally don't, but had you taken the money to avoid the override this year, you just made it worse for next year. All right, the reason, one of the reasons there's a problem with the school budget is you take temporary money and you create permanent expense out of it. It's like the first rule of budgeting, you don't do that, and that's what happened. And I know they have many other issues that drives their budget hard. Another one is, and I know I'm way behind the curve this year, but I say this every year, is that we should find a way to encourage the property owners on 28 to adopt their curbs. Right? The properties that do that, they look way better. And I think the town should lead by example on their own owned properties and start taking better care of them. There's a piece of town-owned land across the street from the first Congreg-- the Congregational Church of Yarm-- yeah, West Yarmouth. The last time they got cut back, I did it. You have all this growth going into the sidewalk. You know, if we have sidewalks, we need to take care of them. And you gotta remember something, that when people look at that, they don't say, oh, the state's not doing their job, the town's not doing their job. They just know it looks horrible. And it doesn't reflect well in our town to continue to have this going. I know highway is shorthanded, and I'm gonna make a suggestion, obviously not gonna get fixed this month or this year, is maybe we look at reorganizing the DPW so that we can cross-train people and not have a cemetery in a parks and a highway exclusively, but we have people that can cross. You know, if you can ride a lawnmower for the cemetery, you can ride a lawnmower for another department, whatever it might be. And maybe that's the way we get more efficiency out of what we have to work with as a town. So that's tonight's.
Thank you, Kurt. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Donna Verokas Carlton. I also am here for the Free Bird Hotel. I abut the, my backyard goes right to their hotel. And Father's Day weekend, they had live music playing, and I thought that maybe, at first it was a, a radio. I thought it was really, really loud. Come to find out, it was live music. So I absolutely oppose this Friday and Saturday from 2:00 to 8:00. No way. I mean, I've been here for over 50 years. This, we've been living here at the Cape. And like my neighbor had said, there was nothing. The inflatable park, the music room, there was never anything here like that before. And it's, it is, it's just, you seem to just be, more and more is coming in, and it's, you know, we're in a residential area, and I just, it's, I don't agree. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is anybody on the screen?
No one on the big screen.
Oh. Okay, we're ready to move on then. Next item is we have with us tonight District Attorney Rob Gallibus. He's gonna give us an update. Coming up to the front, Rob, if you would. We know you asked to be put on the agenda early, and you have a very compact schedule, and we apologize for the delay.
Oh, no apologies necessary at all. May I approach just to hand out an annual report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay to sit at the table?
Please.
The green light is on. Can you hear me? Okay. Again, I appreciate the time, and I noticed certainly that you have quite a full agenda that's gonna go deep into the night, so I will keep my remarks under 10 minutes. I just wanted to touch upon a few items that's been going on since I last appeared before you last year. I don't wanna regurgitate what I talked about last year. But first announcement, I guess, we're a little proud of this. We have a new, we have a website. It's the first independent website for the Cape and Islands DA's office. It's And I've been told it's described as a forward-facing website. You can interact with it. There's actually, it's also included in your packet. And you can do such things with technology now, not only sign up for emails from our office to keep updated, so to speak, but also text messaging if you have that particular interest. I played around with it for about 40 minutes, couldn't get through all of it at that particular time, so it's chuck full, so to speak, with some pretty good information that I think your residents would find relevant. The first topic I really wanted to talk about is human trafficking. And this is a subject matter that candidly was not on my radar when I came into office. Shortly after, I was sworn in in January 2023, an outfit known as Cape Cod Path invited me to an event at Great Awakenings in Hyannis, and it was a presentation by Jasmine Grace, who is a survivor of human trafficking. I went to this particular event, cold Tuesday night in January, and I walk in, about 25 people. There was only one other gentleman there. It was a big, strong guy in a dark blue uniform. It was Chief Scott McDonald from the Orleans Police Department. And after listening to this compelling story from Jasmine Grace, I went down to the Chief McDonald's office about two days later, just to ask him, what were you doing there? And he explained to me that he was trying to set up a human trafficking task force among law enforcement from the entire Cape, wanted every department to commit at least one detective or officer to start investigating and going after human traffickers. It inspired me. Like I said, this was not on my radar screen. So I went back to my office, talked with some staffers to say, hey, what can we do? We formed our own human trafficking task force of civilians to promote awareness. Outfits like Cape Cod Path, or People Against Trafficking Humans, Independence House, Children's Cove, Treasured Life, Cape Cod Healthcare, all came together to start trying to figure out ways in which we can try to promote the issue of human trafficking. As you know, we're a prosecuting office, so I got with our Cape delegation, and I'm gonna use a term, begged for some additional funds, so we could get a prosecutor to launch our human trafficking unit within our DA's office. We were successful in those efforts, and I wanna give a shout out to our two senators, Ciara and Moran, who got us the funds, which allowed me to approach a woman named Vanessa Madge, who was a prosecutor with the Attorney General's Office in Boston. We convinced her to leave the bright lights of the big city, come down here to the Cape and Islands, and launch our human trafficking prosecuting unit. Shortly after Vanessa arrived, she got with Daniel Whitney, who's the Director of our Community Programs, and they filled in, filled out an application for grant funds for $100,000. The grant was offered by the Massachusetts District Attorney's Association. Every single year, they offer these grants to the 11 DA's offices. The pot was $1 million, and each DA's office could apply to up to $100,000. That was the ceiling. As they were in the middle of that process, we learned, of course, they cut the pot to $450,000. So now you have 11 DA's looking for upwards of $100,000 allegedly, or a pot for $450,000 or less than 50% originally posted. Two weeks later, we got-- Two weeks later, we learned that we were successful, and we received $97,000. What we did with the money is we gave $50,000 to an outfit called My Life, My Choice, who works with adolescent and teenage victims of human trafficking, $10,000 to the Independence House, who works with adult survivors of human trafficking, and the balance we used for trainings for both our law enforcement partners and prosecutors in our office. So after that, continue on, start meeting with stakeholders across the Cape and the Islands. Outfits like Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, Community College, YMCA, all were receptive to our offering, saying, we created a hotline and a QR code. And they were willing to put it on websites, documents that they would hand out to their various clients. And about two weeks ago, we received 1,000 magnets that hopefully you'll start seeing soon in the back of taxi cabs, the buses for the CCRTA. I wanna give a shout out to Tom Caher, and back of bathroom stalls and restaurants all across the Cape and the Islands. And this, again, just helps us promote awareness to the issue. The data suggests that it takes six times for a woman to leave the life, and with as much awareness that we can possibly put out into the community, hopefully we get to bring that number down. Moving on to another unit in the office, human rights. The explosion of hate incidents on the Cape and Islands is a little mind-boggling. We created a new unit that's headed by Courtney Scalise. Courtney comes to us with a unique background. She was a prosecutor in New York City for a number of years, then in Guam, and then Anarundale County in Maryland. In all three of those DA's offices, she prosecuted major felonies. Why all that movement? Her husband's in the Coast Guard. So she's originally from Massachusetts, and she, they're returning back. We met with her, incredibly impressed, and she agreed to lead our human rights unit. She's conducting investigations on a lot of high, high-profile and not-so-high-profile matters going on across the Cape and the Islands. Some of you may remember, we had an incident last summer at a pond in Chatham. We had some matters on Martha's Vineyard and Oak Lefs where a white supremacy group tagged postings on top of telephone poles outside of Blackcomb businesses. And more recently, we've had things like writing on the exterior walls of the Mashpee-Wampanoah Language Reclamation Office. So Courtney's leading the charge in those investigations, and we'll be announcing the results of those investigations in due time. Almost done. Sensitive to the time. Campaigning and running for this job, I would say with great confidence that two subject matters resonated wherever I went. First had to do with mental health. We spoke often about how the Cape and the Islands was the only part of the state that did not have a mental health court. And I wanna give a shout out to Judge John Julian, the presiding judge of the Barnstable District Court, who recently launched a mental health court last September. And we were asked at that time to appoint a special prosecutor or a prosecutor in our office to handle the mental health court session. I asked the staff. A woman quickly raised her hand. Her name is Shauna Souve. She has a bachelor's degree in psychology, and she comes from a law enforcement family, her dad being a longtime Barnstable police officer. So the specialty session opened last September. It's growing organically, as you might imagine, and we've been told so far that it's quite successful. Just as a friendly reminder for those that might not be familiar with what a mental health court is, professionals in the field come right into the courtroom to work with that struggling defendant, to identify the core issue. And as we all know, once you make that identification, you have an opportunity to treat it and therefore reduce recidivism, making us all safer. The other topic that resonated well was the need for the DA's office to engage in deeper community engagement. And I spoke about creating a new position, a community engagement officer. We've done that. Her name is Kelly Quealy. And she's been tasked initially with creating a community coalition. We gave it a cute name. It's called the DA and Us. And what we're looking to do is get anywhere from a half dozen to a dozen folks in each of our towns across the Cape and one for each island, to get together on a quarterly basis and share with us what's going on in their respective communities. A staffer pointedly noted that when you look at Cape Cod from a satellite, you see one Cape Cod. But as we all know down here, we have at least 15 different Cape Cod's, if not more so, when you look at all the villages. So this is just yet another way for us to keep our finger on the pulse as to what's going on. To wrap up, I'm gonna ask this. I hope to come back before you in the fall for the following reason. When I took office fiscal year '23, our budget was $5.5 million. Shortly after taking office, I learned that the Northwest DA's office, that's where their big city is, North Hampton, is of comparable size. Each of us have approximately 260,000 annual residents. Obviously, our summer population explodes upwards of towards a million, but annual residents is about 260,000. And again, our budget was $5.5 million. Theirs was $8.5 million. So you can imagine the level of services that DA's office is able to provide that I am unable to provide. In my short time in office, that discrepancy, if you will, of $3 million, has now grown to fiscal year '25 suggestions of 3.4 million. So I've certainly been working with our Cape delegation this fall. I hope to come back before you with some specifics as to what exactly what we would do with additional funding and the additional funding that we're looking to receive, and I'll be looking for support so when we make our pitch to the powers that be in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. You have time for a few questions?
I'm here. Yes.
No, I don't think I have any questions. I think that was very clear. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm excited to hear the programs that you would put in place if you had that, and what, you know, what we always, I think when we bring our county partners in, it's always great, because sometimes we work in isolation as a town, but we have a lot of the similar issues, and one of the things that we don't do really well at is sharing our successes. And one of the things that I'd be interested in knowing is what you see in terms of what you're prosecuting for Yarmouth, what's emerging, what we need to be aware of. And I'm interested in your diversion, specifically with, I was on your website with youth diversion with drugs, and what you have found to be successful, and what maybe Yarmouth could take advantage of in terms of, you know, drug prevention.
It's certainly challenging in Yarmouth with the opioid crisis as opposed as the DA. I get notified of every what they call unattended death, and that could be the result of a suicide, medical reason, but also including overdose. And without knowing the exact number off the top of my head, I can say with confidence that the percentage-wise, the highest percentage of overdose deaths due to overdose is in Yarmouth, and almost exclusively somewhere along that Route 28 corridor. So whatever we could possibly do to, again, promote awareness to those that are in that particular corridor, that, you know, there are services available to try to help as best as possible.
What are they, though? Like, that's what I'm trying to get at. Like, what, what are, what's available to us?
Candidly, we need more knock-in. We need a lot more available knock-in. And that's being told to me by entities like Duffy-- And that's being told to me by entities like Duffy, Peer Recovery Center, law enforcement. So we need knock-in boxes up and down the Route 28 corridor.
Boxes? Other communities are doing that?
Yes, they are.
Without training? Because it's been typical in the past that there's been some small training that where they, I think if you go to, I think on Tuesday, actually, Tuesday nights, they do Learn to Cope. They used to disperse and train people. So that's an interesting...
We've met with Learn to Cope, and I know they would be, they'd come down, you've probably familiar with them as well. They would come down in a heartbeat to offer trainings.
Right, but so, but other communities are just putting it out in the community without training, is what I'm...
They have, yes, there are lock boxes, I guess, for lack of a better description. There's another term that I'm just forgetting off the top of my head for the actual physical box, but it's available, yes.
Okay, well, that's, to me, that's, prevention is going to stop those cases that you see. And we, I feel, are continuously trying to find ways to do that, but obviously, we're not being successful. So I'd be interested, you know, if you were able to get more funding, what types of programs you could put in place, what we could put in place to make headway in that regard, because it's terrible.
I would agree. I would like to offer that we are making some progress, and I have some numbers and reasoning, hopefully as a correlation, but I can't be scientifically sure on this yet. When I came into office, we started doing what other DA's offices were doing over the bridge, and that is moving for a dangerousness hearing on every single case where someone is charged with trafficking in fentanyl. And we are certainly grateful that the courts seem to be listening to that, and far more often than not, those folks that are charged with trafficking are held without bail pursuant to the dangerousness statute from jump. And therefore, they're not getting out and being able to ply their business again, having posted a bail. Now, when I take that, and that's been in play since January 2023, when I started working, we looked at Kelly Research. And Kelly Research has come up, that's an entity that the police departments work with, has come out with the numbers for 2023, saying that non-fatal overdoses are down 10% across the district. Fatal overdoses are down 7%. Now, obviously, I would like to move that needle a lot greater in that particular direction, but it's something that I'm looking at, saying, okay, this is a policy we started in January 2023, and the overall numbers for 2023 seem to offer that it's going in a positive direction. Now, can I say that, you know, with a certain level of scientific knowledge? I can't. It's just an observation that I've made.
Well, I mean, if it is a correlation to, I mean, there's nothing more frustrating than our police doing the work and having them released on bail. I mean, it is, it is just a smack in the face to law enforcement.
No doubt.
And we're, unless you help to change it, which it sounds like you have, we're never going to make any progress. We really have to hold them accountable.
I was somewhat critiqued by the Cape Cod Times about two weeks ago because of...
Don't worry about them.
And that was kind of interesting, in the sense that they said pre-trial detainments are up under your watch.
Good.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. And I appreciate your work on the board.
There are times when, and I'm not trying to say that everyone needs to be detained, but there are certain cases, like the fentanyl, like the gun possession charges, those are cases that need to be.
Agreed.
And I apologize, I don't mean to avoid your question about diversion, about, you said the juvenile diversion program. We do have, as you all know, a diversion program, both in the juvenile side of the house and the adult side of the house. The adult diversion, one thing that I think is a little unique to our DA's office is that we didn't set a limit, an age limit. A lot of other DA's offices will cap it out at 22, I think it is. That just didn't seem rational to me. You could be in your 30s, your 40s, your 50s, and make your first, you know, misjudgment, and, you know, we have a level of confidence that you're not going to come back into the system. We're willing to divert in those particular cases. So it is, it's robust, both on the juvenile side and the adult side. And admittedly, I don't have the exact numbers on me as to what 2023 was or where we are right now in 2024, but I can let you know that Nora Zueno, who is in charge of our diversion, is busy. That's all I can really offer, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Mark, you have anything?
I want to thank Rob for joining us tonight.
I know he's there.
And I very much appreciate the update. The issues that he talked about are very important in Yarmouth and Yarmouth Police. And so thank you for your attention and your advocacy on our behalf.
Most welcome, Mr. Forrest. I didn't realize you were there. I didn't hope I didn't have my back turned on you. Sorry. Unintentional.
I too would like to thank you. As Mark said, there are a lot of, obviously, a lot of issues important in this town that are also brought to the district attorney's office. And feel free anytime to come in and update us. We're always happy to hear from you.
No, I appreciate that, and I...
It's an open invitation.
I will petition you in the fall, and I will say this, it's referred to as a hot bench in my line of work, with the court asking a lot of questions referred to as a hot bench. This is my sixth or seventh presentation as I go on the circuit. You guys have had the most questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tell Catherine we said hi.
Okay, Comprehensive Plan update is next. And then after that, we will have the Riverwalk Park update.
Which side do you want? Yeah. You can go ahead. I'm going to get up once she presents, and you can come back. Good evening, Chairman Stone, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to present our first update to you on the development of the local comprehensive plan. I am joined, Crowley Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm joined here this evening, I think Jim Saban is still here. Here he is, my vice chairman. And of course, our town planner, Kathy Williams, our consultant, Heather Gould, and Jeff Bag are here from the BSC Group. In your packets for tonight's meeting, you'll find a memo from Kathy Williams summarizing our efforts to date and next steps, as well as a summary of the public outreach plan and schedule for us that's coming up, both of which the BSC Group will elaborate on in greater detail this evening. Why is it important to prepare and update a local comprehensive plan? It is through the local comprehensive plan that Yarmouth defines its vision for how to plan for the future, prepare for change, and protect our shared natural resources. In addition to articulating a vision, which we have done, we spent a better part of 18 months creating that portion of the plan. We're now moving to an action plan where we will have a local comprehensive plan that includes actionable items and a growth policy to achieve it. The LCP, we hope, will be a source of information about existing conditions, as well as expected changes in conditions in Yarmouth in the future. Preparing and updating an LCP helps ensure that Yarmouth will be able to respond to changing needs in a sustainable manner. It also can serve as a guide and a resource for you and other committees and board members and residents of our community on future decision-making and the allocation of resources. So I'd like now to turn the presentation over to Heather Gould, who's going to run through a PowerPoint presentation on all the work that they have accomplished for us so far. We just started in April. We had a kickoff meeting at the April Planning Board meeting, and a lot has been accomplished already, and we're looking forward to a very successful partnership with them. We're very pleased to have them onboard with us. Heather?
Thank you. Just to quickly go over what we're going to talk about tonight, we'll introduce you to our project team, the main members of our team, who will be contributing to various aspects of the LCP. Kathy's going to speak to the vision plan, and we'll just give a general overview of the purpose and the process, the consistency with the regional policy plan, as well as our approach to the project and our community engagement strategy, and wrap it up with this project timeline. So the main four members of our team, and we have other people will pull in as needed from our group. I'll be the project manager. I'm joined by Jeff Bag, who is a senior planner, has municipal government background, and will be able to help contribute to a lot of the conversations and facilitations and kind of finding themes throughout the process. Aksa is our public engagement specialist, and her specialty really lies on that online public engagement, as well as like presentation of visuals and infographics, the display of information. And Jeff Fasser is our VP, our project executive on this, and he has been involved in a lot of different master planning projects throughout the state.
So I think all of you are familiar with the 2021 Vision Plan, where we really reached out to our community to see what was important to them and what they wanted to see Yarmouth look like in the future. What they came up with is we really wanted to have a great place to live, work, play, and learn. We're looking to have an attractive and an affordable and inclusive community. We want to make sure that we have a clean and healthy environment. We also want to have a strong economy with a lot of different types of businesses. We want to have a lot of places where we can have fun and recreation, which the Cape is known for. And then we're really looking for educational excellence. So we took those ideas and we dug a little bit deeper and came up with some ideas of ways we can preserve, promote, and provide for the 11 different categories that you have over there on the right, and that's detailed in the vision plan. It's really our launching point, so that we can identify those, as Joanne mentioned, those specific action items that we can undertake to meet these objectives and goals over the next 10 to 20 years. There's a lot of other plans that we've been making a lot of progress on that play a very significant role in the local comprehensive plan. In June, we received approval from the Division of Conservation Services for our Open Space and Recreation Plan, which is a very important component for water resources, wetland resources, wildlife and plant habitat, open space and recreation. June was a very good month for the town of Yarmouth, because we also received approval for our Housing Production Plan, which is an important component for the housing section of the local comprehensive plan. We also have a very strong capital improvement plan process now with town staff and Bill Scott leading the way, and that's going to play an important role with the capital infrastructure plan as part of the local comprehensive plan, so we can look at the infrastructure that we need in order to grow to meet the goals that we have identified. We're also, Karen Green and Bill Scott are working on some economic studies, soliciting some consultants for that. One of them is a market study in order to identify what additional businesses we need or want in the town of Yarmouth, and how we might be able to actually get them and attract them to come to the town of Yarmouth. We're also looking at different strategies to promote mixed use, so that we have both commercial and residential, maybe within our Route 28 corridor, taking another look at our Village Center overlay district zoning, maybe looking at a 40-hour smart growth, and also taking a look at what other communities are doing for mixed use and what those mixed use developments might look like. We've also made some progress on the climate resiliency and mitigation with the Climate Change Vulnerability and Adaptation Plan, where we looked at all of the municipal infrastructure and evaluated our vulnerability to climate change. One of the projects that came out of that was looking at Packet Landing Marina and what can be done in order to do some coastal resiliency there. I believe that's on a future agenda item for the Select Board. And we're also starting an update on our Hazard Mitigation Plan for emergency preparedness, and that's something that's going to start next month.
So in talking about the purpose of a local comprehensive plan and the process to update it, the vision plan has been a very important first component of the process. And there have been key goals identified within that plan that we are going to dive in in more detail. The purpose of the plan is to guide Yarmouth over the next 10 years, even 20 years. There's a lot of effort that goes into the comprehensive plan. It's a bit overwhelming, the amount of information that's put into it. And one of the goals is really to reflect what the community wants. What are their priorities? How can the town get there? And so the public participation and public engagement component is a huge piece of this. In addition, another main goal is that the plan is consistent with the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy, and that the Cape Cod Commission is involved in the process along the way. So looking at that regional policy plan goals, the Yarmouth Vision Plan addresses natural systems, built systems, community systems, and addresses the RPP place types, which may require a little more focus and emphasis in certain areas related to certain categories. However, it is an all-encompassing plan that will take in various elements as required by the state in terms of having a local master plan. And it will involve housing and open space and recreation, natural resources, historic and cultural resources, transportation. There is various components and elements. More recently, a lot of municipalities have incorporated a chapter on climate resiliency and sustainability. You know, it's in the trend of all of this municipal vulnerability, preparedness, and planning, and mitigation, and all of that. I jumped ahead. So within our document that we will be preparing, we will include existing conditions, we will include goals and objectives within an action plan. Those will be prioritized over a certain phasing approach, timelines, considering who will be involved on the town side and responsible for helping to achieve those actions. It'll talk about funding sources or potential funding sources. All of that will be contemplated within the local plan. We'll discuss potential land use or zoning, regulatory recommendations in terms of looking at different, different results that have come out of the public engagement, some of the challenges that have been identified, some of the opportunities that have been identified, and really create a framework for the town to make progress from moving forward into the future. We've just started the process. We're a couple of months in now. We've gathered a lot of information. The town has a tremendous amount of plans that have either been completed or are now underway. And in coordinating with Kathy and others, it's been a process to get through that information and to try to pull what is important and what is relevant, and how we can bring that into our overall process. Right now, we are in the process of working through Kathy to talk to stakeholders, different groups, different parties that have, I don't want to say an influence over the master plan, but have a lot of information to give us that we can then take and digest. So within that, we also have this public engagement component, and our plan is to have a series of public engagement events where we are getting the community to come out and tell us what they want us to hear. That first public engagement event will be in September, after the summer season is over. And then we will have also established an online presence. We have a project website that is up and running. We will be adding to it as we work through the process. We will be creating more information and more infographics and more kind of visual components to that, but that will be a regular thing that people can look at and see the updates that are being made. And we are going to be providing regular updates, whether it's through Kathy or us in person, as we go through the process. And in terms of our public engagement plan, we really try to meet people where they're at, knowing that not everybody has the time or the availability to come out to some kind of community event that may be a couple hours long. We want to give everybody the opportunity to provide feedback, to provide their thoughts in a way that is convenient for them. We have done opportunities for people to provide feedback, whether it's through an online crowdsourcing map, through an online survey, through the project website, just to be able to kind of offer what they think. We have done in-person, open-house style meetings, where there's really no set agenda. There's several different tables for information gathering purposes, and we allow people to just roam through and provide the feedback they want to feed, provide the feedback they want to give, and really just... and really just make it what they want it to be. We try to make it fun, knowing that some of the information can be a little heavy, but try to make it as understandable and relatable as possible and try to really use storytelling through our maps and graphics and imagery. As I mentioned, we're using different tools for our online presence. We have the project website. We have draft materials that will be posted on there as we develop them. We will use ArcGIS applications. So in terms of mapping, we can create a story map, which also helps to tell stories in, in a very visual display and providing links to all of the, the meeting videos and surveys and anything related to the local comprehensive plan. It's really going to be the hub for people to go to.
The only thing I would add is that we do have a, a Town of Yarmouth webpage that you can easily access. It's just yarmouth.ma.us backslash LCP. And on there, you also have an opportunity to sign up for notifications directly via email. We already have almost 330 people signed up. It's a good opportunity for people to get those notifications and letting people know, like I sent one out about the meeting this evening, if you were interested in an update. And we'll also update that and get the link to the hub on there as well and then put out a notification so all the people who've signed up will know what's the address for this hub, and they can go and take a look themselves.
And just to talk a little bit about our public engagement plan, we've created a document that gives more detail into our approach to this. But in discussing in-person public engagement events as well as stakeholder interviews and focus groups, which we've, we've held a whole day-long series of conversations today with several different stakeholder groups and organizations and, and town officials and working through those, and we'll be holding more of those in the future. Looking at communication methods and how to get the word out, talking about social media and digital marketing, creating different flyers that can be used to help make people aware of the opportunity to provide their feedback. Infographics and branding, having a recognizable design that people can automatically associate to the LCP process and know as they look at it what it's about. This is reflective of the LCP process. I should keep an eye on it. And then even just at certain special events, whether it's tabling or having a display, information available, even just a postcard with a QR code that can be picked up, helping to direct people to the project and information that's available. This is just an example of some of the infographics we've put together for other projects, trying to display the information in a clean way that has some, some color to it and helps to give out data and statistics and, you know, other types of information. And then in terms of our project timeline, the end goal is to have the final plan available at town meeting in the fall of 2025. So there is a lot of information to pull together before then. We have outlined our approach. It's very small. It's hard to see on this. But looking to have, as I mentioned, the first public engagement session in September, a follow-up one in January. And that's really when we pull together all of the goals and objectives and actions within all of the elements of the local comprehensive plan and having that draft document into early 2025 to really be vetted through so that we're ready for that fall meeting.
Thank you. Do you want the board to have any questions or comments? Mark?
I'm fine. No, thank you. That was a great briefing. Thank you.
Okay, Tracy?
This is great. I feel like it's Groundhog Day. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into it, but I'm happy that we're making progress. I'm happy that we're aggressive because unfortunately, we've been at this for so long. The information is only as good as when you collect it, and it changes so quickly. So I'm hopeful that if we aren't 100%, we still bring the chapters that we have to town meeting and get as much of it approved as we can. We need the full thing done so we can get any type of relief from the commission. And we've been waiting on this for years. So I'm excited to have you here. I'm excited to watch the process. When I first started volunteering with the town 20 years ago, I was on the Growth Policy Advisory Council. It was a committee just for the local comprehensive plan. We worked on the chapters. We got them approved. We work with the commission. I'm hopeful that the commission will help, be helpful in moving this along and helping us. But I'm excited. I'm excited. So, thank you.
Joyce?
Well, I'm delighted that we're doing this. I'm really trying to conceive of like the best brand for Yarmouth, and I love the Yarmouth Within Reach. But I also think we can do so much to be a fun place, especially along 28 where there's room to do things in a different way. And I love the idea of an educational component that, that will combine with things that are potentially fun. I personally, although not a pirate myself, was inspired by the talk of the Pirate Festival a few weeks ago, where they were going to have a whole educational component in the middle of a pirate fair. That's the kind of stuff I think we would all love to do. And as long as you don't set an upper age limit on it, I'm there.
Thank you. I have no further questions or comments other than to thank you for your hard work and your continued efforts in keeping the board advised of the progress of the plan, which I understand ultimately has got to be consistent with the Cape Cod Commission and approved by them, correct?
Correct.
So we've got to deal with that too as we go. So thank you very much.
You're loose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse myself for the next conversation. Let me know when we're finished.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Next, we have Jim Saban and other members of the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee and our town planner Kathy Williams. And Jim has filed a memo dated June 18th, which is in our packet. And the floor is yours, Jim.
Well, I'm going to do the real hard part of this and hand everything over to Kathy Williams, who has done an excellent job in preparing this. And we have promised ourselves that we will be out of here within 15 minutes because we know you have a lot to do tonight. So without further ado, Kathy Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I am going to be providing a general update on the project, but there are two items which we really need input from the Select Board this evening. And if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to stop at those particular slides. Everything in the slides was included in your packet. I just tried to put it in a format that might expedite the, the situation. So where, where do we stand? We have, the Phase 1 contract was executed with Robert B. Hour Marine Division for about $9 million. And the Phase 1 work includes the majority of all of the site work, the boardwalk, the kayak launch, the play area, all the different walking trails, and then the special event space. There's a second phase, which is going to be the restrooms. That's bid under a different mass general law, so it's bid in as a separate package. We're hoping to open the bids in August and award that in September. So we'll have a construction time of June of 2024 through August of 2025. We have over $13 million available for the, for the project through CPA, Tourism Revenue Preservation Funds, Department of Conservation and Recreation, Land and Water Conservation Funds, Seaport Grant, Park Grant, and Town Appropriations. So we do have the potential to construct both phases within the current budget, but we're going to be a little bit dependent on the bids that come in for the Phase 2 for the restroom, and then whether we need to use all of the 5% contingency for the Phase 1. So we'll have a better understanding of that in September when that information's done. And we have a little bit more of the site work has been completed. Robert B. Hour is going to go very, very quickly, and they're hoping to have the vast majority of the site work done by, actually by October. And then they'll be working on the boardwalk over the winter because there's certain time of year restrictions on the salt marsh. So one of the things that we really are looking for input from the board this evening is the actual park name. The Phase 1 includes the park entrance sign. We've been using, you know, kind of the Riverwalk Park as a nice descriptor placeholder as we've gone through design and permitting and grant funding. But there's never been a formal, official vote on the name of the park. So the Select Board could vote to simply formalize this informal placeholder, Riverwalk Park. Or if you're interested in having additional input, the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee could, could conduct a really short naming contest to solicit names, to review them, and then provide their three top recommendations to the Select Board. So if possible, is it possible to get the input from the board on each item, Chairman? Or would you like, would you like me to complete the whole presentation? Mike? Do you want me to do, okay. So the, the other thing has to do with the sale of the boardwalk planks. We have over 2,000 boardwalk, planks on the boardwalk that could be engraved. So we did include about the engraving of 200 of them within the actual bid for Phase 1. That did give us some prices for actual engraving. And you can see the sources there, and they, they varied a little bit with regard to the amount. And we also got a quote from Mike at Plymouth Sign for $125. So we're looking at an estimated amount of maybe 150. The cost for the board itself is 75. And it's going to take a little bit of effort once we get past construction for the DPW to coordinate all of this, get it to the engraver, and then actually install them once they come back in. And then since we're trying to create some type of fundraiser, we put in a donation of $75, which kind of came up with a total of 350. So the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee was recommending plank sales for different categories of 350 for individuals, 450 for nonprofits, and then 550 for local businesses, excluding any logos or, or web addresses. We'd also be looking for some type of authorization from the Select Board this evening to sell, to start actually a plank sale campaign at whatever prices you guys endorse. And then also ensuring that these funds get directed to an account for construction, maintenance, and operation of the Riverwalk Park boardwalk and event space. Of less importance for this evening, but something that we were trying to get an idea is gauging the Select Board's interest in any type of naming rights for various areas within the park. The restroom office building, the playground area. We do have a really cool pirate ship that might be interesting if it was named after a local museum. Or the event space itself, the kayak launch, the different boardwalk overlooks, or even the boardwalk entrances themselves could have some naming opportunities. There is an existing Select Board naming policy for town properties that's in your packets, and it does allow for a bidding process for private companies and organizations to name a portion of, of town property. It can be for a specific duration. It might, you also want to set minimum values. And those are all the different parameters that the Select Board would set in the town solicitation. Might have the opportunity for DICEC members or other community members to help publicize that solicitation to get the word out that the town is looking for naming rights. To facilitate this, the town did move forward with modifying the zoning bylaw to take out names, naming signs, plaques, and sponsorships from the zoning bylaw and making it via a Select Board policy. There's a draft in your pocket of that policy, but the needs to be, more details need to be finalized, and the actual signs sides need to be developed. And other future considerations for the park, even once it's constructed, we're not 100% done. We have a interim use policy for the park, but we need to update that event use policy and also come up with some actual fees to charge for use of the periodic event space. We might need to tweak the license agreement to include some of the permit requirements specifically related to, to sound management. And then we're also, the Chamber of Commerce has commissioned an event venue study to look at the different types of events that come to town, the different venues that we have, and helping to identify the best opportunity to maximize that. We're also hoping that they might also include some fees from other venues so we can get an idea of what other communities are charging for their venues. Another big component, I think, that would be important at the Riverwalk Park and elsewhere in town is some form of public art on town-owned land. So we have drafted a public art committee charge, and that's something that's coming before, I believe, the Select Board in August. And we're working to coordinate with the Chamber and the Cultural Center on that details. And then there's also the artist shanties and the kayak vendors. There's paths and electricity to the artist's shanties are there, but we need to procure the shanties and develop a program. Still needs to be completed. And of course, we need to have a future solicitation for any kayak vendors at the kayak launch there. And that's it. So the, the two things we're really interested in this evening is input on the park name and, and selling ourselves some planks.
So, Mr. Chairman, our committee's had some discussions about the naming. We're comfortable with River Park, Riverwalk Park. The majority of us are. I don't happen to be a part of that majority. But it's the coolest thing a selectman gets to do is they get to name stuff. All the rest of the stuff you do on Tuesday nights is pretty boring, and I know that because I sat there. But get to name stuff is, is kind of one of the fun parts of being a selectman. This is something our committee has discussed for the last...
Four or five years?
As far as the naming of the, of the park, it, it falls right to your feet to decide who, what, when, where, and why. And one of the things that we suggested is you could either stick with the Riverwalk Park. You could do a naming where we could do a Survey Monkey. And I'm sure the Chamber would be willing to participate where the, where the DICEC could review those and bring back some recommendations to the board. Or the board could just get together and say, hey, let's name it the, you know, the American Flag Park. I mean, you could do whatever you want. You're the, you're the town's policymakers, so you get to do that. But it's critical that we start coming up with an answer. We've already broken ground at, we, and I really wish we did have a groundbreaking ceremony. We've been working on this for 40 years. And I know it's a lot of work, but I think the people in this community should get an opportunity to see that, yeah, we're spending their money. Even if we put a great big sign out on, on Route 28 that says "Coming Soon" or something. But, you know, the people in this town have been waiting for this park for a long time. And, you know, I just drove in there today, and I was very excited to see that they... Share my pictures with you if you want to see it later. Or go over and take a look. But they've actually started scraping ground. So we're, you know, I'm, I'm, big smile on my face to say that we're making progress. Kathy has done an amazing bit of work with this, with Beta, to get us to this point. And I think the people of the town will be very happy with the end results. But the key things for tonight is the issue of naming and the issues of the fees for different... And it's not just the, the boardwalk planks. I mean, that we have an opportunities, you know, while we're going through this whole process of developing this park and creating the idea and the concept, one of the quick questions common, commonly came back, and it came back quickly, was, are you going to maintain it? Who's going to pay for that? So some of these opportunities, the 2,000 planks, the 15 or 20 park benches, the, the playground ship. There are so many opportunities for us to, to use with some naming rights that can put a, a count together that can maintain this property without having to continue to go back into town coffers to... And we think we can do it in a way that could almost be self-sufficient. But again, it starts with you. And so we need some feedback from you so that we can now move forward. So that's kind of why we're here. I still have four more minutes. If you want to talk to us about any of that, we'll be glad to answer those questions that any of you may have.
So it looks like this project, if I read the materials correctly and hear you correctly, is going to, there's a very substantial chance it's going to come in within budget and maybe within some. So in terms of the planks, for example, would that, would those funds be dedicated more to ongoing maintenance of the facility than anything that would deal with the initial construction?
That would be our preference, but again, we don't get to make that decision.
I guess I would have one caveat. I'd like to have it be for construction, maintenance, and operation. That way, if for some reason we're a little bit short and we sell a bunch of planks, we might have the opportunity to just finish the project. There might be some other opportunities, like I said, with the shanties where we might want to dip into that.
And this would be similar to what's going on at Big Raise Beach, more or less, with the planks?
Yes. Or the, the boardwalk...
Be a little different, whatever.
Yeah, the boardwalk at the Bass Hall, those boards have been sold out for a couple of years now, so.
The other thing is, in, in terms of naming rights, it's, that's an interesting question, and, and naming the park. The fir-, the first thing I would want to see is, is there some historical connection between Captain Parker's in that particular location? Was there a Captain's Park? Was there a Captain Parker? And if so, who was he?
Jerry Manning.
And, no, I'm talking about Captain Parker I, not the 10th generation. But I, I think some historical information might be in order. That's where I'd start. That's where I'd start. I hate to see a name of a facility that's pretty much going to stick for a very long time, just based on, you know, something that's easy or convenient, or somebody's willing to throw a few bucks at it. And also, I think you've got to take into consideration, does it have geographical significance? For example, if you renamed the Bass River Bridge, and there was an effort to do that at one point in time, one of the major pushbacks was, well, you know, everybody knows where the Bass River Bridge is, but people aren't necessarily going to know where this person after whom it's named. I think you've got to keep, I think you've got to keep that. But my understanding is that there was a real honest-to-god Captain Parker. That remains to be seen, but I think, I think that certainly should be looked into.
Yeah. Bob Kelly from the Historical Society did take a look at the history of the site, and I think some of the names that they were coming out were more like Indian-related, like Matachese or Massacasset, and I think it was Seaview, and then maybe related to Crawl's pasture. So there were some, there was some history that had been done there. He didn't mention anything, in my recollection, about Captain Parker?
No.
I don't know if David remembers.
David Reed, member of our committee as well.
Chairman, David Reed, I am a member and vice chairman of the committee that's working on this. Two things. I don't think we were suggesting that the naming of the park should be put out to any commercial enterprise, but the naming and sponsoring of individual components within the park, such as benches and signs and elements in the playground. I agree with you that I think the park should be named by something that we decide on, that you decide on, that is appropriate for the whole town, not by some commercial bidding. There was, in fact, a Captain Isaiah Parker, who was a sea captain of the ship, the Lavender, built in Yarmouth, and was, in fact, a prisoner of war in the War of 1812. He, after that, retired from being a sea captain and decided to become a farmer, thought that was much safer than being a sea captain in those days, and he had a farm on the west bank of what's now called Parker's River. His home was just north of where the Captain Parker's Restaurant was. It's described in historical documents as 15 rods north of the county road on the west side of the river. It's obviously long since gone. But he was very well-connected with a lot of the original families in Yarmouth, the Lewis's and the Matthews families in particular, as I recall. And the river is credited, the name of the river is credited to him in honor of Captain Isaiah Parker. One other kind of disjointed comment that I wanted to make in response to Kathy's comments earlier, frequently when in her presentation she made reference to what we have done and what we have accomplished in the last several years working on this project. She should have said, in many respects, what I have done. While our committee has done a lot of planning and a lot of decision-making, the hard work of getting the funding and the permits and the contracts has been done by Kathy Williams and Lotta and Karen Green and the other staff in the town who have worked on this project for the last several years, and I think the credit should go to our town staff who have done the real work of bringing this project to fruition.
Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better.
I'm going to go to Joyce's comments.
Oh, thanks. Yes, I was very interested in the whole concept, and it seems to me that one of the things that you're looking for with asking about naming for the park, I mean, understood that it's not, you know, going to be IBM Park or something like that, do you want to name quickly so that you can put things up, "Coming Soon," "Coming in 11 Months," "Coming in 10 Months," or do you want to excite community interest by some big public naming endeavor? I hate to call it a contest, but some community naming. And of course, always, if you, if you want the second, realizing that you may get a name like Bodie McBoat, as happened in an English naming contest, but I'm interested in, I guess it depends on your timeline, which way you want to use that.
So if I can, I'll jump in quick and then let Kathy help me out. We don't anticipate the park actually being open for another 18 months, two years?
Well, the thing is, is they're doing shop drawings for this sign right now, and they're just waiting for us to come up with the name to put on it. It's going to take a little while to fabricate, and I do think that they were hoping to install it probably by October at the latest, but they need to fabricate it and get it out there. So there is some timeliness to this, and I'm sorry that we brought this to you at a later date, but there will be a construction project sign, and it's staying with the Riverwalk Park because that's kind of what people have become known. Even Mass Mapper, the state's GIS, calls it the Riverwalk Park. So it's really kind of caught on in the last seven years that we've been using it. So there is a little bit of time. When I say contest, I don't mean that somebody gets to win it. It would just be a case, a way of soliciting names that you could then have the DICEC look at and then present to you some options. Maybe there'll be some more historical information we could find out and include that as well. I think if we do that fairly quickly, we might be okay, but this isn't something that we could decide like three or four months from now. I think that would be too late.
Okay. I, for one, like the name Riverwalk. I might maybe make it all one word, but it describes what it is. It hints at nature to be seen, to lure in tourists.
Right.
San Antonio has a Riverwalk.
I can see we have a division at the table there, so I will stop.
Yes, we do have a division at the, and that's okay. You know, that's what committees are all about, having discussions and coming to some compromise and some conclusions that we can all live with. And I'm one of those people that can live with whatever this board right there wants to name it. We just want to see it open, and if I can fall back quickly on something that you said earlier, fun and education. Two things that this park is going to have is the ability to have fun, and it's going to have an ability to be educated, because we're going to be having display boards along the boardwalk that will explain the nature and the marsh and all that. So there are going to be opportunities to get both of the things that you're looking for, fun and education. But we've got to get it done, and we need to know about those two items tonight, if we can.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you, Jim and Kathy, for the update, the presentation. And I echo the comments by others about all the time and energy and work that's gone into this, and clearly Kathy, you've made this a real priority, and you've done a great job. We really want to give you some direction tonight on naming and on the planks, and I think we should, I think we should do that. On the naming, I'm very comfortable with the idea of a committee, working with the Drive-In Site Committee, and maybe utilizing the help of the Chamber to get feedback from Yarmouth residents, and coming to the board with three recommendations. I'm also a little biased, like the chairman. I think history is very important, and I think that needs to be at the core of this. I appreciate Dave Reed's reference to Captain Isaiah Parker. So if there's a bias on my part, it would be to have Captain Parker, or Parker, or Parker's River. Somehow, that needs to be in the name. It would only make sense, because we need to designate a place that people are familiar with and want to come to, but also I think we need to always draw attention to the town's history. I appreciate the work that Bob Kelly did, but I think in this case, Parker, Parker's River, somehow making the historical connection to Parker and Captain Parker in some way, I think, makes a great deal of sense. So that's kind of where sort of, I mean, I might as well get my bias out on the table. So I share the chairman's interest in focusing on naming that respects the town's history. But again, I think the idea of having a committee work on it and then come to us with some recommendations, I think is a great idea. So I'm all in support of that. And on the planks, I think you've done, you've done, I think, great work, at least in teeing that up for us, and I'm happy to bless what you have sort of laid out for us, you know, with the chart and the graphs and the suggested dollar figures. I have nothing on my own to sort of go up against it, and if those, if those figures are figures that the committee supports and the town administrator supports, I certainly will support them as well. And I think it's important that we give the green light to move forward on that. I don't think this has to be a long exercise on the naming, but I also appreciate the updates on the other items, because we've got a lot of work to do. We've got to make some decisions about the finances and the management and making sure that revenues associated with aspects of the use get dedicated to the appropriate places, and I think that's a discussion that we need to have, you know, once we get beyond these two items. So I'm all in favor of a committee and having the DICEC committee come to us with a few recommendations. I like the idea of working with the Chamber on it, and I'm prepared to endorse the recommendations on the planks.
I make a motion to endorse recommendations to proceed according to the discussion we've had? Oh, wait, sorry, can't do that because, no, we are a quorum with Mark, right?
We are.
Yep, okay.
We would like you to make the motion to support the $350, $450, and $550 dollar numbers.
And then the separate account for construction, maintenance, and operations, so the plank sale money doesn't go into a general fund.
Motion to support the plan as presented by the Planning Committee and the Town Planner for currently named, possibly to be changed in name, Riverwalk Park?
Maybe they're two separate motions?
Yeah, I'd like, Mr. Chairman, if we could just get the, get the planks squared away first, and I, and I would, if Kathy sort of laid out a motion for us, Kathy, could you repeat it, because I'm going to basically move that motion.
Right.
And I withdraw mine.
To authorize plank sales at $350 for individuals, 450 for nonprofits, 550 for local businesses, and authorize the initiation of the plank sale campaign at the prices endorsed by the select board, and then direct funds from the plank sales to an account for construction, maintenance, and operation of the Riverwalk Park Boardwalk and Event Space.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, others in favor? Aye, aye?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, we'll do, we'll call Mark.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I vote aye. So three in favor, one abstention. That's Tracy, and one absent. Okay.
Now, on the other item, Mr. Chairman, I think what has been suggested is that we endorse the formation of a, I guess, we request, and again, I'm going to go back to Kathy on this. I think if we wanted to follow your recommendation, we would be asking the DICEC committee to assist the board in facilitating a, I'm not sure I want to call it a contest, but for the lack of any other word, I think that's what it, what it is, with, or maybe recommendations that involve a survey of the public on the naming of this place, and to involve the Chamber of Commerce.
You support a separate committee?
Yeah.
Which would include the Chamber? Okay.
So in your packet, I think, again, I have a name for my brother-in-law who does all kinds of wonderful stuff for me. I call him Mr. Wonderful, and I got to tell you that the town of Yarmouth, Ms. Wonderful, is sitting right next to me, because in our packet, there's a sample of a survey monkey. She's even got us prepared, so if you want to take a look at just the general idea, we could work with the Chamber and get something done quickly. I think we have to get something done quickly.
We could use the Chamber. The Chamber's great in helping us advertise things. They get the word out to a bunch of different people, in addition to all our venues and avenues for getting the word out. So they're very, very helpful, and I'm sure they may also have some, some ideas.
So is my motion sufficient enough to get you going, or do I need to reword it?
Anything more?
No, I think that's great.
Oh, okay.
It's okay? If it's okay, then I second it.
All right. Well, in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you and I. Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye. Joyce votes aye. So it's a three, one abstention, and one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Imperfect progress. It's better than no progress at all, and we are having progress.
I think we got it all. Chris? We got it all. That's Riverwalk.
You do what I do, you check off each item as we go.
We've got a number of things left. Next item is introduction and designation of temporary manager. Cape Cod Farms Roman Numbo III LLC doing business as Cape Cod Farms, 601 Route 28, West Yarmouth, Massachusetts. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Do you want to introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Richard Naum.
And my understanding is that your dad was the manager of the business?
Yes, but he recently had an accident where he was hospitalized, and he's no longer able to fulfill his duties as manager, so we wanted to replace myself as a temporary manager for the time being. Honestly, it'd be probably more prominent to replace it permanently, since I'm the person who's there on-site most often.
And you met with Sergeant Hennessy, went over all the...
Yes, sir.
So you're Richard, right?
Yes, sir.
And you went, you went over all the local estate rules and regulations with you?
Yes, sir.
And he's satisfied that you're a suitable person to be, you know, in a management position?
I really hope so.
And your dad was Khalil?
My dad is Khalil, yes.
Okay, and he's, he's still going to be the manager, and you're going to be an assistant? Is that what's going on?
If that's what is suggested, yeah, that's what we will apply to as first. If later on we want to do it as a permanent thing, we can switch it at a later time as a permanent thing, but for now, whatever allows us to, you know, run is fine.
So this is simply just adding him on as an assistant manager? It's not removing the dad?
No, that would work perfectly.
Yeah. So your father can still, you know, subject to his health and his availability, he can still be the manager, you also can be the assistant manager?
However, however it works, that's fine with me.
Where you'd be covered, is that okay?
However, if, if we can, if we can operate under that way, that's absolutely fine. It's just wanted to make sure, because like I said, he's, he's incapable.
Then if you want to be the manager of record, Sergeant Hennessy does say in a June 11th email to Pam Barnes in our administrator's office, I met with Richard, who will be taking over as manager.
So could, is there a way we could switch over?
Cape Cod Farms located at 601 Route 28, West Yarmouth. The checklist has been completed, is attached. It's my opinion he can be considered a suitable manager. So is that what, you want to be the manager?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be the best case scenario, since I'm on, I'm on-site more, like, I'm on-site the most, so it'd be, it'd be the best for, because what Sergeant Hennessy has suggested to us, whoever, whoever is on-site at the most can oversee the most, should be the manager on the record. So I think me switching, switching over to me should be the more appropriate thing.
Okay, so we just, we need a motion to accept Richard as the manager of the business?
Do we have any discussion, or?
Do you have anything, if you have any questions?
Okay. Just like to say, I have gone by the newly renovated station, and it looks wonderful.
Thank you very much.
And on the question of the title, I find that something like emeritus, like manager emeritus, always works if somebody is downsizing their role.
Sounds good, thank you.
I just have a procedural question. How come we don't get the actual application anymore? We only get this checklist. We used to be able to see, you know, now it's, it's checked.
There's not much to this, actually.
No, there isn't, but, but on the actual application, we used to be able to see their citizenship, whether or not they're TIPS-trained, what, what...
I've done all of that. I'm an emeritus.
I'm not talking about you specifically. It's just checked here, so I guess we take his word for it.
I can bring in certifications.
I'm not talking about you, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying if...
Talk about Sergeant Hennessy. We don't have an application. We used to get the application.
No, we don't. He's just really being a substituted manager.
So, but isn't there requirements for the manager? Doesn't the manager have to take the class? So that's the difference, that's why I'm asking, like...
Yeah, usually there is an...
We're talking about it, just so I'm clear. There's an annual class, or every two years?
How does it be the manager of record?
If I may, I did take that class with Sergeant Hennessy, the one you're speaking of.
They have to come before the board and get it approved.
Yes.
Oh, yes, no, I'm wondering what course Tracy's referencing?
There's a course that's biannually, or every two years, that you have to take with the sergeant, with the sergeantet thing. And I have taken that class, yes.
Good.
The town has a requirement that any new managers have to, we have an annual course that you have to go to, I think it's once every two years, one of the two years. And that is for people that are owners and managers.
I've taken that class.
As opposed to staff.
Well, that always has, that's because of the assistant.
And they have to attend this. It's usually put on by Phil Magnuson, who's both an attorney and retired police officer, does a really good job, and he gets up and talks about all of the different legal aspects of responsible management of liquor establishments, both with pouring licenses and package stores. And every year, we get a good voluntary response, but there's four or five old adults usually, and we have hassles with them, and that's a violation of their license not to attend those courses. Did you go this year?
Yes, Sergeant Hennessy held the class this year. Me and my cousin, who's the owner.
And they keep records as to who's there, who's not there.
I signed in and everything.
So you, as a manager of record, would have to?
I went to the class already.
Yeah, so it's once every, I think it's, every two years you have to go at least once?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the new manager of record.
Hold on, I have a second.
Second.
Tracy?
Second.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Mark? We'll pass our mark for now.
Aye.
Okay, Tracy?
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So that passes by a vote of four to zero, with one member absent. I'm happy that you did take the course, and?
Thank you.
As long as you do that and follow the guidance that you got from Sergeant Hennessy in going over those, a lot of those materials are included in the course, as you know.
Yeah.
And then there's a, there's a separate program, Joyce, that's not mandatory?
He has to tell me this because I'm the newest member on the board.
No problem at all.
I beg your indulgence.
No problem.
The Yarmouth Restaurant Association and most of the businesses of the Cape, I mean, Yarmouth, belong to it, they have their own program, and they do it every year for the service.
Sure, I knew about that one.
So they're not the management, they're the frontline people, and they teach them about how to stay out of trouble, what's expected of them, fake IDs, they go over that, how to detect intoxication, or somebody becoming intoxicated, you know, not serving alcohol to minors, reporting certain incidents to police. They go through it A to Z, and they have someone from the DA's office come down, but that's voluntary. We don't require that, but most of the businesses send people there for that. So it's good.
Thank you.
Okay, you all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. You're right, Tracy, we usually do have an app with that, so. This is a hearing, annual weekday, Fridays and Saturdays. This is an entertainment license, S H R I M, Shrink, Shrem, I'm sorry, Inc., doing business as Free Bird Motel, 553 Route 28 West Yarmouth.
Good evening. Good evening.
You want to identify yourself for the record?
My name is Parth Patel. I'm the manager on record for Free Bird Motor Lodge.
I'm going to read this into the record, just legal ad, and then we can go from there. The Yarmouth Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Shrem Inc., doing business as Free Bird Motor Lodge, Parth Patel, manager, 553 Route 28 West Yarmouth, for an annual weekday, Friday and Saturday, entertainment For live and recorded music. To include up to five musicians or singers, possible amplification system, and/or disc jockey, all music to be outside only, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. These hours are for both Friday and Saturday. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 25, 2024, in the hearing room at the town offices, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The select board's meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 Friday, June 21, 2024, in the town administrator's office at Town Hall. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So if I read your application correctly, you're not seeking any indoor entertainment, correct?
Yes, you are.
I am correct. You're only seeking outdoor entertainment.
Yep.
But you want to be able to do that with live and recorded music, up to, in the case of live music, up to five musicians or singers?
I want to change that to maybe like maximum three, not even five.
All right, up to, says that's a max. A possible amplification system, and/or a disc jockey?
No disc jockey.
Now, usually, and I'm going to let you give me your presentation momentarily, usually when we have requests for licenses, when people request an outdoor license, it's usually not amplified music, usually like one or two acoustic pieces, something like that. This is a little bit unusual in the respect that it's not seeking any indoor license. It's all outdoor, and it can be amplified. So why don't you?
So?
Tell us what you want us to do and why.
So, as you guys know, we were former Hunters Green. Our family owned the place for the last 10, 11 years. We are not really into entertainment business, so I didn't know what amplified or what not to be. So we are pretty much going with two, maybe three, a couple singing and acoustics, nothing loud, nothing show, no concerts, nothing. It's more of an ambiance for our hotel. The hotel is more of a music theme, a 70s rock theme hotel, so we are trying to create an ambiance for our guests. And it's going to be during the daytime between 2:00 and 8:00. We don't even expect eight, but it's just there. Pretty much from 3:00 to 6:00 is what we are looking for. That's where we are going to be, because most of them will be going for dinner by then. We're not at dinner service, nothing. It's pretty much just for entertainment for our guests while they're in the pool.
Why outdoors, why not?
We don't have room for indoors.
You don't?
We don't.
Can I ask you how large your lot size is?
The lot size, it's not large, it's less than 2,000 square feet. It's a small outdoor area where the bar is, so there'll be like a one singer or two singer with an acoustic.
Okay.
We did get some written commentary on this, didn't we?
We did receive a letter.
Yeah, here's, here's a letter we got from, June 20th. From?
Donna, yes.
Dimitar Ivanov and Daniel Yordanov. They say that they're a homeowner at 9 Ruby Street in West Yarmouth, can't make it tonight. They oppose the granting of an entertainment license for live music or DJ performances. Our community has already had negative experiences two times with the nearby music room, fall of 2021, and fall/winter '23 slash '24, and the drive-in concerts in the summer of 2020. Considering the previous non-compliance issues of the music room, or town regulations in very loud music and bass, I'm concerned about the Firebird Motor Lodge's adherence to noise ordinances. Furthermore, the Yarmouth Police are already busy in calling them to address potential noise disturbances which further strain their resources. Both myself and numerous neighboring households are increasingly burdened by disruptive noise at all hours of the day. For instance, Reindeer Lane, where many elderly and disabled residents reside, is in a very concerning situation, situated directly behind the motel's pool. It's unlikely they would welcome regular poolside parties in their backyard. And then he talks about, my objections stem from past experiences, such as the Fourth of July at the nearby Mariner Resort, where excessively loud music and bass disrupted our peace. While such occurrences may be tolerable once a year, and during them twice a week would be untenable. Moreover, our area is already heavily trafficked with numerous bars, restaurants, and the recent addition of a water park. And he compares the Route 28 becoming similar to the Jersey Shore, eroding the character of Cape Cod. That's pretty much what he has to say. And then there's a letter from Adana Barokas Carlton dated June 21. Received on that date, my house is situated behind the fence at the rear of the Firebird Motel Lodge. The house has been in the family for over 50 years, and we enjoy spending time in the backyard. Typically during the summertime, the loudest thing you would hear is people playing shuffleboard. The weekend of Father's Day, June 15, 16, 2024, they were playing music at an elevated level. If this is an indication of what is to come, for six hours each Friday and Saturday, I would prefer it not happen and raise my opposition to this entertainment request. Those are the only two letters I have. I don't know if there's anything else.
There's also a correspondence from the chamber that was filed this afternoon.
Oh, yeah, I see the chamber letter.
I think you have one there.
Give you a chance to respond to this. So we got a lot of the chamber dated today. Who supports your request? Says that you contribute to the local economy and enhance the vibrancy of our town. Talks about your recent investments in facility improvements, demonstrating your commitment to providing high-quality services and amenities for our visitors. From what we understand, the Free Bird Motel has never had a complaint from neighbors regarding noise or other disturbances. This speaks volumes about their dedication to maintaining a peaceful and respectful environment. The addition of live music at Free Bird promises to offer a new entertainment option, enriching their cultural experience for their guests and giving them the opportunity to hire local musicians. We are confident that the management of Free Bird will continue to uphold the high standards that have earned them the trust and respect of their neighbors and the business community. And is signed by Mary Vilbon, president and CEO of the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce. Is there anybody here present in the audience that would like to be heard on this? Yes. You in favor or are you opposed, sir?
I am opposed.
Okay, tell us why you're opposed.
Okay.
And identify yourself, please.
My name is William Warnock. I live at 49 Anastasia Road. Just so, the lady's not here, but we've gone through this before. There is a child that lives just left of where this hotel is. This child is under 24-hour supervision, has to have a nurse there 24 hours a day. We pay for it with some of our tax money. This child is in really, really a sad situation. That music room has drove that family absolutely crazy. They are so disgusted that they, because the way we were treated, the way they were treated with the music room, when they brought this to them, they were ignored. Somebody should realize who your neighbors are, and nobody has seen this child. The child is there 24 hours a day. It's a very, very sad situation. They do not need any more aggravation. Neither do I need any more aggravation from the music room or the water park. The water park, it's kids, what are you going to do? The kids have to have fun. I understand, it goes away at night. This was named a different place, and that is totally wrong what this chamber lady said, because I live right there. They have had parties every year, I don't know if it's a military group or a school group, that's absolutely outrageous. I know that she's heard it. Everyone's heard it in the neighborhood. Don't believe anything these people say. It's all about money. They only care about money. They don't live here. When you live here, then you'll realize it. I should not have to be put neither to my neighbors, and I can tell you right now that four of them were disgusted, and they said, it doesn't matter what we do, we're not going to win because this is in the bag, it's already corrupt, these officials, they don't care. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm pleading to you people to give us our peace and quiet back. This music room has been nothing but a disgrace. When they did that, let's forget about the music room, it's just terrible, and we don't want to keep calling the cops every five minutes. It's ridiculous. They have more important things to do. Many times at night, I hear this music room. I'm not going to call, I would call almost every weekend because they wake me up. It's not right. And these people, they've lied. In the past, they've been so outrageous at night, that old name, it's just ridiculous. The place looks good as far as, you know, they did spend a lot of money, and they're sprucing it up, and I understand that. But from their past record, it's been very, very disgraceful.
Comment?
I'll look at that a second. Does anybody else that wants to be heard on this? Are you in favor or against?
Against.
Okay. You tell us your name, your address, and why you're opposed.
My name is Bob Ebert. I live at 43 Anastasia Road. I'm about three houses away from the music room that has become a very, very bad subject. It doesn't make any difference if you're having a cookout, if you're trying to read on your porch, or something as simple as going bed to bed at night. We hear background music all the time. This facility isn't that far from it. It's only about, I'm going to say, three houses?
Yeah.
Between the music room? Between the Music Room and this facility. And just because of the disruption, that's why I'm opposed to it. We've got a tight neighborhood of about 50 homes that abut both of those properties. And that's it. I just found out about this four o'clock this afternoon. I never received a letter of this hearing.
You never got notice?
Never got a notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Mayor.
Hi, I'm Donna Barokas Carlton. My backyard is right to their hotel. In the past, I don't know exactly what they have over the fence, but it's either a sitting area where their guests, you know, can sit and relax, but there has been radio playing. And I can hear everything. I can hear conversations, you know, when they get a little loud. It's that close. So this entertainment is just not gonna work. I love my backyard. I have flowers everywhere. We enjoy it. Sitting, you know, having cookouts, and this would really be a disruption. Thank you.
Now, sir, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to respond to these letters and these oral comments that have come. That's what we want to focus on right now. Go ahead.
Mike, could I interrupt for just a minute? I'm a little confused about what we're actually being asked to do here. Now, DJ was, DJ was, but I mean, the details. DJ was mentioned, but no DJs now.
Not doing DJ.
And it's now gonna be acoustic music, not amplified.
Acoustic music.
Okay. So that's very different from what we had in the packet. That's that's
No, he said that, well, in the packet, he says possibly amplified, but
And now he says no amplification.
Yeah, we're not gonna go any of those higher decibel levels at all.
Do you have the green cards? Have you turned the green card?
You said recorded music, right?
No recorded music.
But that's
Live music.
Just live music with the artist or a couple acoustics.
So you're looking for only live music?
Live music.
Up to, what, five pieces?
No, maybe like two people or three at the max.
So you're backing off with your
I'm backing. It's way too many. When I read it, when I did it, I was we are never into entertainment process. We don't know what we want to do.
Thank you. We'll get to that momentarily.
Sure.
Tell me what your response is to these criticisms and objections.
Let's go to number one, the kids' parties. That was 2022 when we were Old Motel. We had that for last seven years, eight years, when we were, since 2015. That was once in every four weeks. I mean, sorry. Once a year, four days, in May. That's what it was. For the last two years, we have banned that because we don't want that type of crowd in our hotel. Number two, we are not Music Room. We are a hotel. We have other guests. We have 74 rooms. We have 150 guests a lot of times. We are there to entertain the guests, not be a nuisance. It's more of pleasing the crowd, creating the ambiance. They are there for vacation. We don't want to have a party. It's just let people sit, hear music. Number three, entertainment is far away from the houses. And we are not asking late at night. We are not asking. We are pretty much asking during the daytime, in the afternoon. Not even, not that many, not every day. It's Friday and Saturday. And maybe only Saturdays sometimes. But Friday and Saturday comes on a weekend. That's why we are just asking for it.
Okay, so back to Joyce's point. Now you're not seeking any recorded music, right?
No.
Or you skip, you're taking that request out, right?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of you had originally up to five musicians or singers. How many do you want now?
Three at the max. It's always going to be three, at the maximum three. Yes.
So three max musicians or singers, right?
Yes.
Okay, and no disc jockey?
No disc jockey. It doesn't fit in 70s theme.
Unless you had a jukebox.
No.
And same hours, two to eight, Friday and Saturday?
And he's crossing out the possibility of amplification as well, which sounds to me like that would mitigate some of the concerns.
Yeah, they're gonna have whatever the artist brings, that small speaker while they're playing, it's gonna be there. That's all. There's no amplified music or anything. It's more of an ambiance kind of
Yeah, he had possible amplification. So no amplification, right?
Yes.
That's true.
Okay. So based on where we are now, which is no recorded music, three maximum musicians and/or singers, no disc jockey, no amplification. So based on that, I guess, kind of amended the application, if you will. I'm gonna go to the board for any questions or comments, starting with Tracy.
Yes. Do you have the green cards that you've
I believe I Did you submit those? I don't have them.
No, I had to do it myself because I think Pam handed them.
So you either had to submit them to her or submit them right now. Without the abutter's notices, it's not
It's not a legal hearing.
So do you have them?
No, I don't have it right now. I have it in my office, I think, because I had my brother mailed out all the packets through the USPS.
But they are in your possession?
Yes.
So we'll need those to verify that they've been sent out. We have the evidence that it has been placed in the Cape Cod Times. We do not have the evidence that the abutter's notices
I can get the proof for you that it was sent out.
And do we give him the list of which it's sent out?
Well, we don't have any, um, did you advertise this in the Cape Cod paper?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
We have that. Evidence is here from the Cape Cod Times.
Oh, yeah. Published on 6/13/24. I guess
Well, is it true that you've been having outdoor entertainment? We heard that in public comment.
We have not. We had a, so we have a music theme, so we have a lot of musicians from Symphony, from Music Room, from other music venues staying over. So they are there, sitting, they're playing themselves. That's what we have. We didn't have them. We never paid for anyone. We never hired anyone. We didn't do any of that sort. They're hanging out by the pool. Sometimes they're just playing a guitar or something.
So, I mean, I'm glad that you've amended your your wish. I'm not even sure three is, three might be too many. And, you know, I think it's, and I don't know, the policy may have changed over the last few years, but I don't think the Music Room should have any effect on you. And what this board has done in the past is try to find a balance between making sure people live in peace and that our businesses are successful. And that's what our job is to do. And I think with the reduction of what you've requested and perhaps maybe a reduction in hours, and here's what I have to say. I think we can we can try it for a year, you know, and then come back. If we've had any complaints, that's on you. And it may not be renewed. But like I said, I think we need to put these things in place. Maybe two musicians and from maybe three to six, which is what he's asked for, instead of the two to eight, and make sure that it works for them. And see if we can make everybody happy. And then, again, check it in a year. I'd be I'd be in favor of supporting that with the reduced requests.
So you would
I think two is enough personally. I don't think you need a band out there. You can have a couple of people. I'd say, he asked, he said three to six would work. I think
Three to six is usual time. The reason I'm asking from two to eight is because if there's a long weekend, we want to do five to eight, depending on when the crowds come in, when the guests are coming in. That's why we are asking for the leeway from two to eight.
You suggested our
Before, he had said three to six. I think
Three to six is the usual time on a Saturday afternoon.
I don't, I'm just saying that if he's willing to reduce it, that we should try that. Again, I think we're trying to find a balance that will make the neighbors not have to have disruption in their lives. So as much as we can try it in a limited amount. You know, those parties that were there for many years, those were crazy parties. And you owned that at that time.
Yeah, we know that.
I know you've changed it and invested it, but you were the owner at the time that allowed that. And I know there were a lot of police presence at that point in time.
Because we hired them to be there, to make sure the kids were safe. We had security 24 hours during that time as well, and I didn't sleep for two to three days for those time periods. We understand. Thank you.
I'm glad that's over.
Chris?
Yes.
What are your thoughts on this?
Well, my thoughts are that it doesn't seem he should be responsible for the Music Room, which has clearly been a source of aggravation to people. And no one in this room is responsible for New Jersey. I mean, no, we just can't take that on. I would think concerning Tracy's thought on this, with reducing the musicians, the only thing I would think was if you had a vocal duet, because it seems like this is shading much more toward vocals.
Yes, live artists.
Then if you wanted one musician to accompany it, that would require three. So he's already come down from the up to five. I guess, I think, you know, that the three might be artistically necessary, otherwise some kinds of performances would be ruled out. But given that they're gonna be acoustic, I think you don't have to worry about that really loud instrumentation that you can get in some places. I was at a coffee house in Hyannis last week having breakfast with someone, and they were giving a lovely local musician a chance to play. But she had the big amplification on it. We finally, we just gave up. We just nibbled carbs and had beverages because we couldn't hear each other.
Yeah, that's not the experience we're trying to get.
Seems like that's absolutely eliminated. And I actually thought the amplification was the biggest concern here.
Okay. But otherwise, you'd be comfortable with the hours?
I guess, I'm thinking that some of these hours are gonna be limited as days get shorter anyway.
That
So I guess I would feel that it might be wise to allow like a little bit more time in the summer. And then naturally, around the pool in October, it's
No.
Not much is gonna happen.
And we shut down on Columbus Day weekend, right after Columbus Day weekend, we shut down.
So October's gonna be really dead.
Yes.
Mark? Any
I'm still a little confused on what exactly
Okay.
we're voting on. I'm glad that there's been some amendments and modifications. I think that's a big help. No amplification. And the limitations that have been expressed, I think, is all movement in the right direction. I just, before we vote on this, let's just make sure we're clear on what exactly it is.
All right, so where he's at is there's not gonna be any recorded music at all. No DJ, no amplification of the music. And there's gonna be three maximum musicians and/or singers. And those hours would stay the same, which would be 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. Tracy has suggested perhaps considering limiting it to two musicians instead of three, shortening up the hours from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. and having a one-year review date.
I can see the point of a one-year review date. That makes sense.
I agree.
I think that's a good idea.
Zoning Board of Appeals does that all the time. A lot of their So
I definitely support that one-year review as well.
Okay.
I have no expertise on making judgments about two musicians, three musicians. I have no expertise on any of that, so I'll defer to others.
Let me, um, let me go to Mr. Patel for a minute. Are you, and this is not a trick question or trying to get you to do anything.
Sure.
I'm just trying to see if there's a consensus that can happen. And I don't want, I'm not trying to lead you or direct you in any way. How do you feel about two musicians instead of three, number one? And shortening the hours up to three to six and/or whatever other hours you would, could live with, subject to a one-year review? How do you feel about that?
With respect to my application, I, when I learned everything about how many musicians are sometimes needed, I have pulled back from five to three for a reason. If there's a couple, like, acoustics or something they're playing, and there's one singer, that's the maximum it's always going to be. That provides the ambiance and the level of music we need at the max. And that's not gonna be every time. That could be only one person. That could be two people. That could be three. I'm just getting a leeway on where I want to be. And regarding the timings from two to eight, I'm happy to reduce to seven o'clock because after seven o'clock, even my guests would like to sleep at eight sometimes. I'm okay with that. But three to six is very limited. Sometimes I need two, sometimes I need three, sometimes I need five to seven, depending what artist is available when. We are not doing two, three concerts a day. It's not a concert. It's just a performance.
Sure you're willing to scale back if I'm two to eight to two to seven?
I'm willing to do so.
But you still want to stay with the three?
It's
Is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then you would have no recorded music, no amplification, no disc jockeys?
None.
Okay.
Excuse me?
So do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I thought we already did that. Yes, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
One second.
We have people that still want to speak. I don't know if you want to
I'm not gonna take any more commentary. Mark, how do you vote to close the public portion?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We can still talk about this, but I'm not gonna take any more public commentary. We have to have some other business, and we have to put some limits on this, so here's my question. Do I have? Let me try this first. I'll try to do this in form of a motion, so if somebody can just say yes or no, in terms of a second. I move to grant the request for an annual weekday, Friday and Saturday, entertainment license for outdoor entertainment only with a maximum of three musicians and/or singers with no recorded music, no disc jockey, no amplification for the hours of 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, subject to a one-year annual review. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So that's what we're going to be voting on now. If the vote is unsuccessful, then somebody else can make a motion to do something different, if that's what the board wants to do. All right?
Can you also make it subject to the?
So we got that again, this is going to be acoustic.
Subject to the return of the.
Don't forget the returns, that we need those, that it should.
Yeah, and it's subject, the license is subject to.
Condition.
Returning the, um.
The blue knox.
Fudders notices, evidence.
Certified receipts.
Correct. You'll have it tomorrow.
Again, just for sake of clarification, it's going to be acoustic music only.
Yes.
Not to exceed three people.
Yes.
All right, nothing's going to be amplified?
None.
No recorded music's going to be played? Your, your hours are going to extend from two to 7:00 PM instead of eight? And then one year from now, you come in for a review, and if things are fine, should have no problem going from there. But if there's complaints or whatever, the board could either eliminate, you know, any portion of that license or fail to renew it past the one-year anniversary date.
I understand.
Understand that?
Yes.
All right.
Can I just ask some more questions then?
Any discussion before we vote?
Yes.
Tracy?
I have discussions. I, I just think five, five hours is a long time to have to listen to music outside if you're in your backyard. A couple hours I could understand. Anyway, I'm not going to get hung up on that if that's what the board chooses to do. But do you have any shrubbery, or what, what is your, what is your lot line? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the assessor's map. You're very close to a neighborhood. Do you have any shrubbery fencing? What do you have to contain the noise?
We have shrubs, we have white fences. We have, uh, in the back we do. In the front, we have some hydrangeas we have planted around. We don't have shrubs that covers the whole property, no. We do have white fences all around the whole property.
Like eight foot, six foot?
Yes, six foot.
Six foot.
Whatever's legally required is what we have put it on.
Make a motion to make them put shrubbery in the back truck to help us?
No.
Excuse me if I may. It's my eight-foot fence in the back, and my neighbor's eight-foot fence, which he has put shrubbery there. It's not his. I don't know what's on the other side, but on my side, it's not his.
All right. We ready to vote on the motion? Mark?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye.
Your chair votes aye as well. So that passes by a vote of four in favor. One absent member. And, um, keep in mind, this is subject to a review. So as long as you respect your neighbor's rights and try to be an accommodating neighbor, I think that'll go a long way.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, construction and demolition CND fee second hearing. We went through this in, in fairly, um, lengthy terms last time. And, um, but I, I simply would ask you to do, Robie and Jeff, is just give us a, um, brief overview of what the, um, fee increases will be and the purposes for which, um, they'll be used. And I, I don't expect, you never know, but I don't expect a lot of public input. But let's see what's out there. But let's give them, let's give everybody who may have missed the last hearing just a brief overview of what this fee request is, if that's okay.
Certainly, I'll just quickly introduce us. Jeff Colby, the Public Works Director. Robie Whitehouse, our Assistant DPW Director is here as well. And she can cover very quickly the fees. Maybe if you wanted to put up that slide that had the fees, and there you go, and what the changes are, that would be great.
Absolutely, thank you for having us. One thing that I didn't really discuss last time, I just want to touch base on it real quick, is what is construction and demolition? There may be some confusion out in the public with what that is. Construction and demolition material are basically items that are considered waistband in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Some of the items on that waistband list. So things to consider are your wood, your clean, your gypsum wallboard, any plaster, toilets. It also includes bulky furniture such as sofas or chairs that are upholstered. I, I just wanted to kind of touch base on that because there may be some people who didn't really understand what construction demolition is. And as regards to the fees, I think it's important to note on this spreadsheet that our neighbors to the east and the west are substantially higher than we are. And, and they are in proximity for the construction and demolition business, the most regional locations in order for these people who have construction and demolition material to go to. So they are much higher, as you can see. The town of Dennis is 225, and the town of Barnstable is 235. Yarmouth is currently 165, and our proposed increase is to 205. I'm not sure if you're looking for more than that, but that, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
That's for the, um, 165 and 205 is per ton. And then there's a mixed ton that will go from 190 to 230.
Correct.
Okay, um.
The last increase took place in FY '22. So that was April 2022, when this board awarded, allowed the rate to be increased to 165. And on the next slide, I can say that, um, when we talk about the fees that are paid, the fees that are paid by the people who come in and bring the materials, that's that fee of 165. But the town actually pays a vendor. The current vendor is called Win Waste. And their fee that the town pays in order for that material to leave our property is currently 144.90, and on July 1st, that fee will go up to 152.15.
And these costs are supported solely out of the fees that are charged?
Correct.
They don't come out of the tax base? So we have to have enough revenue to pay these increases?
Correct.
Okay.
I also want to point out, on that same slide, I referenced next year when the contract is due again. We have heard that there are potential increases up to 25% on that cost that needs to be considered. And we'll be coming back to see you again, I'm sure, to review those numbers.
Okay. All right. Does anybody in the public want to be heard on this issue? In support of it or in opposition to it? Okay, does any board member have any questions or comments? I'll start with Mark.
No comments.
Tracy?
Just whether or not we got any, any comments since the last.
Is he written commentary?
Anything?
No.
I don't think so.
No written comments.
Joyce?
Oh, um, I thought the presentation last time was really thorough, so I think I'm, I'm all set. But I thank you for the, the little definition of what would be considered construction materials. Because I think that does confuse people when they think, well, this chair wasn't holding up the roof, so, good.
All right, do I have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Proposed fee increases?
So moved.
Have a second? We have a motion and a second? Okay, all those in favor will take a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Passes by a vote of four zero, one member absent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd also like to say my, express my appreciation to the staff at the disposal area. They keep that facility open seven days a week. And I'm very grateful for all of their abilities and their friendliness in terms of answering people's questions on site. And should there be any questions, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to the staff or myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Robie. Request for endorsement, paint stewardship program legislation. Thomas B. Edward via Zoom. We have a Zoom presentation here.
Hands up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak about paint stewardship. The bill is presently being considered by the MA House of Representatives. My name is Tom Irwin. I live in Dalton, and I'm a retired chemical engineer and primary care physician. While I was a member of the Dalton Waste Management and Recycling Committee, we were facing the same daunting waste crisis that Yarmouth faces. No landfill space and dealing with rapidly ever increasing hauling costs and tipping fees. And we were looking for a solution. After a careful study of ways to address this issue, paint stewardship seemed like the perfect first step. And after confirming it was working well in the eyes of customers and, or consumers and retailers in Vermont, New York, and Connecticut, I became an advocate for this law. Paint stewardship is a program where unwanted paint can be returned to any participating paint retail store any day they're open without a disposal cost and without regard to where the paint was purchased. This program is voluntary for retailers and transfer stations. As you can see in the first page of what I hope you had as handouts, the retailers in Vermont freely come and go from the program that suits their business. The cost to consumers is 75 cent to a dollar fee per gallon paid at time of purchase. The collected latex is followed to reprocessing plants, reblended to light new condition, and sold for most 50% of the original cost. The oil-based paints are most often burned as a co-fuel in cement plants that are outfitted with state-of-the-art effluent gas scrubber systems to prevent pollution. And this program has been working well in 11 states, including our neighboring states of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont, and New York. The key benefits that Yarmouth are going to see at first, it's going to be a service that your residents will value. This is apparent by noting that between 40 and 60% of the latex returned to the Anfield, Connecticut Sherwin-Williams store each week comes from Massachusetts residents. This is also true of all paint retailers close to the MA, of any MA board. Also notable, 91% of 932 Massachusetts residents dropping items off at household hazardous waste days signed petitions encouraging their legislators to become bill supporters. This suggests that 91% of Yarmouth residents with unwanted paint in their basements, and likely there are many, would support having this law. Second, it will present no cost to municipalities and will decrease household hazardous waste day costs, freeing RDP money for other important solid waste issues. And third, and probably most importantly, it will be a model for future product stewardship legislation that will address additional larger items such as mattresses, solar panels, rechargeable lithium batteries, and packaging. The resolution being considered is consistent with the state's plans. There is no arm twisting. As highlighted in your second exhibit, the MNA is a subordinate. This is the testimony they had before the E and R. Your third exhibit is the residential waste section of the MassDP 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan, where product DPR in general, and paint DPR in particular, are called out as contributors to moving the state towards its goal of zero waste. Of particular note, this master plan, using 2018 as a baseline, calls for a 30% reduction in waste by 2030 and a 90% reduction by 2050. And without stewardship programs, I can't imagine how this would be possibly achieved. In addition to the state, there is broad support. Paint manufacturers and paint retailers who helped craft this law, support having this law. They, the, our 3,200 Massachusetts residents that have signed in petitions, including the 932 people dropping off items at household hazardous waste days, and the embarrassingly large number of Mass residents bringing their unwanted paint to our neighboring states clearly support this law. In the legislature, 28 reps and 12 senators from both parties sponsor or co-sponsor this bill and are clearly supporters. And there is support from 70 municipalities to date across the state that have passed similar resolutions or endorsements with more expectancy. So what is our, what are our next steps? House legislators have commented that significant municipal support through 40 resolutions by mid-April was critical to demonstrate sufficient municipal priority to compel serious consideration of paint stewardship by the Ways and Means Committee. Fortunately, we achieved this goal, but as of yet, Ways and Means has yet to act on this bill. Hence, to further improve the odds, as we must, that this bill is not only seriously considered, but also favorably reviewed, we must strive for as many resolutions as possible. Therefore, with this need in mind, and since Yarmouth residents will appreciate this law, and since this law will save municipalities money, hence, since reducing waste is critical to our future, tonight, I respectfully request the Yarmouth Select Board add their valid endorsement of paint stewardship by passing their supportive resolution. And I thank you for your attention and your consideration of this request, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I, I have a question. I want to know if our Recycling Solid Waste Committee has reviewed this proposal.
Who, whether who has?
Our Recycling and Solid Waste Committee?
They have not.
They have not.
I don't believe so. I think he just very recently asked to come on. The way I read this, and my understanding of it is, this is kind of like a, um.
It's like a deposit.
He's trying to get a statewide initiative to get this before the Mass Legislature. And you're going from town to town to try to gain, gain support for this?
Um, uh, close. I, the bill is already in the legislature.
Oh, it is, okay.
Bill number 8823. Yep.
How long has it been in the legislature?
Uh, it was, this is the seventh session of the legislature that the bill has been brought forth. This, however, is the first time that there has been, as, as we're discussing for Yarmouth today, a clear indication of municipal priority, so that the legislature is taking it far more seriously. In fact, because of the degree of interest, the, this legislation made it out of the Environment and Natural Resources Committee one month ahead of the deadline, which is the earliest that it's ever made it out. Usually, it's after the deadline. And I do wish to note that the cooperative extension for Barnstable County is, endorses this. And of course, they're in communication with all of the waste management folks throughout the Barnstable County.
Anything else, Tracy?
No, I just, I, I mean, I think that this would be in their purview.
I think this is pretty brand-new stuff for us. I don't think any committee's ever viewed it. All right, Bob?
Well, it's interesting that later on in our packet is information about hazardous waste collection, and it goes from July till October. So that's problematic. I always find like, what do people do in the meantime? They don't want to collect that stuff. So if we can get it recycled properly at any given time, I think that that's always a good thing.
Mark?
I want to thank Tom for, um, joining us tonight and, and hanging in there with us at our meeting. You know, obviously, we need, we need to sort of review this. But I, I applaud you for the, the initiative. I think it's all, it's, it's all with the right spirit and the right direction. And let's just give our, some of, we've got a really good, um, group of volunteers that are very much on top of the collection of hazardous waste and other materials and recycling. And I'm sure we would very, very interested in their feedback as well. So thanks for joining us tonight. I'm, I'm not going to be able to vote on this. joining us tonight. I'm, I'm not going to be able to vote on this, this evening. And for the rest of my colleagues, given my medical situation, I have to leave the meeting. So I'm gonna say thank you once again to Tom and the rest of you, and I will have to sign off for the rest of the meeting.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Oh, Mark, take good care of yourself.
Thanks.
Thanks. I, I strongly support this. I mean, Tracy made a very good point about where does that stuff go, other than the hazardous waste collection days? I would actually say it's also much better for the latex paint. If you've ever had a third of a bucket of paint and it's still good, and you, you just wish you could find someone who loved that color and could use it. And then, of course, the only way, if you live in a small house and you can't keep all this stuff, is to let it dry out in the backyard and then take it to the dump. I mean, this seems like a much more practical approach. If you take it to the paint store, they're going to know local art groups that might have a use for both kinds of paint. And it seems to me a great thing to be able to divert from our, our, our dump.
Okay, thank you. All right, we appreciate you coming in, and we'll take this under advisement. We may end up referring it to our Solid Waste Advisory Committee, but I don't think we're in a position to take any action on it tonight due to basically short notice. But we will, we will return to consider it.
Okay, well, thank you for your consideration of the matter. I do appreciate it. And please know that it's important for as many municipalities to speak their voice as possible, and the deadline for this particular session of the legislature is July 31st.
All right, thank you.
What I was going to ask.
Thank you.
So can we ask that this, that this be referred? I'm not sure if they'll meet between now and then, but if they can, and give us their report, and if they're, if they're supportive, then I would, I would vote to, you know, based on, well, I'd like to see their recommendation. But yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see what they have to say.
Don't we don't need to vote for that? Send it to them tomorrow and hopefully if they can have a last.
Thank you, Tom.
Will they wish me to be present for their consideration of the matter?
Well, we don't know that, but Tom, Bob Rittenhour here, we've been helping you in the office. If you can stay in touch with us, we have your contact information. We'll refer this to the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee and then ask them if, you know, potentially, you know, they could have a hybrid meeting where, where you could participate as well. So I'll help you coordinate that.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Next item is a discussion slash vote, Regional Emergency Communications Center Intermunicipal Agreement.
Now, we have Elizabeth Lydon from Mead, Talaman, and Costa, our town council that worked on the intermunicipal agreement, to help develop it, to help us walk through and evaluate any of the aspects of this agreement. And I'd also like to invite, we have our public safety team here, Chief Enrique Arasquay, Chief Kevin Lennon, and, and the team to come on up to the front. And we have Mr. Simon, who has presented a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Fellas, why don't introduce yourselves to the record?
Kevin Lennon, Chief of Police.
Scott Smith, Deputy Fire Chief.
Hi, Enrique Arasquay, Fire Chief.
Richard Simon, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. We have town council. Good evening. We had been over this several times at various meetings, and my understanding is that the chiefs of all three towns are in support of this intermunicipal agreement for reasons that have been discussed over and over. So Bob, um, this discussion slash vote, what action are we looking to take tonight on this?
If possible, in, in the intermunicipal agreement, it, it does provide that it requires a vote by July 1st. Now, I don't know if that's an absolute drop dead date, but if it's not approved as of July, we'll have to go back to the other communities because they've already voted to approve it. So the idea was that, since meeting last with the board, we've conducted some public outreach sessions. We had a very nice session over at the senior center facility. We've promoted the idea through the social media, the website, and the video content that we've been playing over and over. We've continued to study it with the public safety team. The Finance Committee has reviewed it and has made a recommendation to move forward. And we also has, have Elizabeth Lydon on hand to address some of the, any issues and questions that folks have. And I, I think that the key part of this process that is critical for us is that it looks like the state is on the cusp of making a major grant award to this regional entity, if it does in fact exist. And it would be, under the E911 system, the, the first feasibility steps at designing how a regional emergency communications center would work. And in order to be eligible to start that process, which really ticks off, it's probably a four-to-five-year period that we need to, to study this and work it out, we need to have an intermunicipal agreement. And some of the, the, the key elements of the intermunicipal agreement are that it requires the team of the three communities to develop two transition plans. So it has to be a written transition plan that comes back to the board of selectmen and is approved before anything moves forward. And the, the transition plans govern, number one, the operations of the center, how exactly it would work, and number two, it covers the transition of the personnel and the staff. And it requires a written transition plan that takes into consideration the agreed-upon goal of ensuring that current employees will not be adversely impacted. And what that means for us is that all of the dispatchers must be automatically transferred in and not have any risk of, you know, losing their jobs. But, but that is a process that we need to work with our regional partners to develop those written transition plans, which come back to the selectmen and are approved before we move forward. Those are, two items are, are drop dead items. And the, one, one of the, the key items that we feel a level of confidence, if I can speak for the, for the chiefs, and I know they can speak for themselves perfectly well, one of the key provisions in the intermunicipal agreement is it has the operations committee that is set up to make recommendations on the budget, the equipping, the staffing, and also the protocols for the actual dispatching that meet the needs of our community. And by having an operations committee with the direction of the two public safety chiefs representing the town, I, I think there's a level of confidence that we can make this regional system be a true improvement for our community and that we're not going to lose any of the integrity of the system that we have now, and we're also going to protect the staff. So I, I think that the, what, what we'd like to do is maybe with the help of Attorney Lydon is, you know, walk through some of the elements of, of how this agreement works. It does provide that if the town determines that the transition plans are inadequate or wishes to pull out, a written notice just needs to be given terminating it, and the town will have no further responsibility for any payments under that. And, you know, based on that, we don't think that there's an enormous risk, but I, I think that the, the major item is the, the chief's feeling after study that this will represent a major improvement in the way that the dispatching for all of the public safety emergencies is handled for our community. And so that's sort of where we're at at this point. I don't know if I left anything out. I, so I think it's, you know, for the questions of, of the board on, on how the intermunicipal agreement works, or whether, you know, we're interested in pursuing it, is, is really the point we're at now.
Okay, good. Any questions from board members, Tracy?
No, I want to, I want to hear from.
You want to hear from her first? Okay. Go ahead.
So we're, I want to hear, Liz, your thoughts on the, the intermunicipal agreement, how it works, what maybe potential risks are out there or benefits?
So, for the record, Elizabeth Lydon, Town Council. I worked with Town Council from Sandwich and Barnstable to come to a mutual agreement. We went back and forth with several iterations of the draft and finally met and agreed upon all of the terms that you see in front of you. One of the things that was concerning in the beginning was, you know, just to make sure that Yarmouth had a say in the decision-making process. Resulting from that conversation, we put in the governance section in the draft whereby all of the decision-making of the rec director is upon recommendation of a committee formed by all of the towns that includes the fire and police chiefs. And if there's any disagreement about the decision that is made by the rec director, then it would go to the town managers and town administrators for further resolution. And so that's one of the concerns that we had that was addressed in the draft. Another issue that we had was just making sure that the term was long enough so that where the town is investing significant time, energy, resources into creating this district, we want to make sure that we have a long enough term, that we are recouping the time and money spent in doing so. And so we've adjusted the terms so that not only do, does it consist of a longer term for the agreement, but there, there is ample notice given for termination. And if the, the town of Barnstable obviously terminates, then the agreement itself is null and void, but they have to give even longer notice for termination because it impacts all of the towns. So those are some of the things that I had raised as a, a concern in the beginning of the drafting process, which I feel has all been addressed in this latest draft. The costs are split amongst the towns based on the volume of calls and the population so that it's fair, and most of the funding is coming from State 911. And the purpose of this agreement getting signed right now is so that we receive the funding to, to move forward with the project, because without that agreement in place, they won't give us the funding. But the other benefit of that is that State 911 will be reviewing this draft and pointing out any issues that they have or that we've possibly missed that need to be addressed. And so then it would come back to the towns for further review if there are any further issues as identified by the state.
Do you see any unresolved issues or any pitfalls for the town of Yarmouth with respect to where this draft stands now?
Candidly, the only thing that I could see being a potential issue is that sometimes when these are created as a regional district, you create it as a, under a specific statute whereby all of the towns are actually creating a district, not signing on to a rec center itself where the town is the host, but all mutually kind of building this facility together and having a joint stake in this. Barnstable is taking the lead here, which has its ups and downs. Some of the benefits are that they are the ones taking on a lot of the risk, and they're the ones taking on the, the leadership role, procuring the construction and building the facility itself. The downside I saw to not following that process was that, similar to a regional school district, if you create a district under that statute, under 6A, if any of the towns don't appropriate the money that's required, then there's kind of an automatic provision in the statute that says it's levied upon the town anyway. Some towns don't like that, and so I can see that as being a, a positive or a negative. But my only concern there is if the town chooses not to appropriate, it's an essential service. And so, you know, we have to explain that at town meeting, that this is something that we need, and although it's, you know, discretionary where, whether they want to appropriate, it's really a necessity, and so it, it needs to be appropriated annually. So, so that was one of the concerns that is kind of still out there, but is addressed in the draft, is, you know, you're appropriated by a certain date, and then you have the option to terminate.
I don't even know where to start. I, I like that the governance is in there, and it's a police and a fire chief, which doesn't make sense to me if you have a town that doesn't have their police or their fire in there, but they get to have a vote by both? That's what it says. That's what this says, the police and the fire chief from each town. So Sandwich doesn't have both police and fire in there, but they get two votes. So that, I, I guess I come at this a lot from what you've said, Liz, from, you know, dealing with the regional school district, and there's a lot of unforeseen's to me that we have to think about potentially in the future. And I get concerned with things like a very small town coming in, having equal say as with maybe 5% of the calls, that we have 27% and they have equal say, because that's what's going to happen. Not that I want a weighted vote, but I'm just saying down the road, we could really lose control of any say whatsoever. And the numbers, though, I'm, I'm still stuck on the OPEB thing, and I'm going back to the Collins Report. And if you look at the Collins Report on page 37, and their, their potential budget for year one, there's $981,000 in there for OPEB in the first year's budget, which concerns me because it seems like the dispatchers of Barnstable are going to, their OPEB requirements are being put all into this budget. So now we're going to be responsible for their years. $981,000 is a lot of money. I don't think that that's just for this year. So, I mean, where do we start? Are we starting with having that ownership on us? And again, the, the longer time to, to move from this, if you wanted to get out of it, is great. The problem is they don't have the ownership of the OPEB benefits when they leave. Those are going to be reassessed to us. They get the benefit for 10 years of service, and then they walk away with no responsibility. I don't, I'm, I'm not down with that at all. When you leave and you have had an employee that you got the benefit of, you should have the responsibility of their OPEB benefits after they leave. It shouldn't be transferred to another town. That's, I mean, I just can't get past that. That's, and, and the numbers here, when, when you look at the numbers, have, another question. Have we looked at the union, are, are they going to go into a separate union, or they're going to keep the same union with Barnstable? The dispatchers that are in Barnstable? Are we joining their Barnstable, or are they going to become a new union?
My understanding is that the employees are going, well, first, that's going to be worked out in a separate agreement. As, as part of this agreement, it, it states that the towns will work that out in a subsequent agreement. But my understanding is that they'll give first priority to existing dispatchers, and the employees will be subsumed by the town. the employees will be subsumed by the town of Barnstable.
I'm still uncomfortable with that wording, that they get first priority. Like, it should just be a transition. It's, I don't understand the process. I don't understand why there's a process. It should be written into the agreement that our dispatchers will have a job, period. I don't, I don't know why we would even, you know, mince words on that. It's like, they deserve to have a job. I don't, I would love to look at their union agreement to see how it aligns and what that looks like for our employees. I'm not sure, I know that you were in the midst of looking at that. I don't know if you got into that kind of detail, the finance committee.
So we did not fully get into that level of detail. We do understand that it would be a, at this point, would be a new union.
Okay.
That's sort of the last bit of information we had.
Okay.
That it would most likely also be a enterprise organized operation. So the town of Barnstable operates 10 different enterprises already. This would be modeled on that type of approach.
Okay. I'd just be concerned of what got bought into that enterprise and, you know, all of their retired dispatchers, if that probably would be brought into that, which means those costs for the already retired ones would be dispersed to the new people.
Again, that's why I think the agreement is very good in allowing for that subsequent, because in addition to that issue.
That doesn't happen.
I'm just, I'm just looking at what was given to us here, the 35% of the overall budget.
That is for pensions.
It's not OPEB.
More wording?
Yeah, that's all fringe benefits.
All fringe benefits.
You see, the thing with the OPEB, I really don't see that as a negative. In fact, you're quite frankly reducing your OPEB liability by, if the town employees are transferred into a unit in Barnstable, which, and one of the reasons why it says in the agreement that you have to do a transition plan that comes back and is approved by the towns, is because there is a collective bargaining obligation under Mass General Law 150E for both our community, Barnstable, and any other communities. And they need to have the time to fulfill that obligation, determine, is it a new union? Is it going to be the same union? And that's part of the transition plan. But it's going to take a little time to complete those negotiations. And what we're saying is that the deal breaker for Yarmouth is all of our people are going to be automatically transferred in, period. They will not be hurt. So we just need to allow that to be done under the appropriate law, and then come back and say, are you satisfied with this? Does it work? And we've had those discussions, and we've let them know that, look, the standard is that we're going to transfer our people in. Now, when you get to the OPEB situation, first of all, you know, without our finance director, and so we operate ourselves, a large number of enterprise funds. There are best management practices that, in order to determine what you're talking about are the quote-unquote indirect costs, which are things like the OPEB. You can't assess someone OPEB for previously retired employees. It's highly regulated. So what will happen is that we take our employees, they automatically transfer into Barnstable, along with their OPEB liability. So we take a, we take a big cut right off the top of our OPEB liability. It's gone. But it's not really gone because now we're operating in an enterprise where they take that same liability, right? And now it'll be a little bit less because we don't need as many dispatchers for, you know, the town. There'll be, some of those dispatchers will be attributed to the regional system. So it's not as many people in the towns individually as it is in the entire unit. So they take their entire unit, what they have, and then they determine actuarially, based on the same system in the actuary report, Siegel does them, that we use now, and they determine what the total annual OPEB liability is for all of those people.
Going forward.
Going forward, none of the passive. And now, now then, they're authorized, they can assess us, what our share of the total OPEB, based on our percentage, right? That, so it goes back to that. Right now, we're 27% of the calls. So we only pay 27% of the total annual going-forward OPEB liability. And if we at some point in the future leave the agreement, we don't take any of that OPEB liability with us. We would have to go somewhere. For instance, we, if this thing in 25 years goes away, we would have to either get a new regional center that has similar OPEB, similarly assessed, or we go back to our system where we get the employees again, and then we start with a whole new crew, and then that OPEB liability is less than when you have the people that have sort of aged out through it.
I'm fine with the going-forward piece, if that's, that's what's going to happen. What I'm not fine with is us being assessed for a town that would leave. So you explained a piece of it, but like, say Sandwich leaves. Okay, you just said it's better off for us if we leave and we walk away from it. But if we did that, then it would be dispersed to the other towns.
All right. So the scenario whereby you got three towns, right? And then one of them pulls out. That would increase costs for all of the towns, and we would have one or two options at that point. We could, if the regional center goes forward, we could either add someone to replace those calls, right, and then maintain the same budget, or we'd have to go back and renegotiate this situation so that their costs are cut. But what we wouldn't do, I don't foresee us doing, is we take a three-town system, three towns' worth of employees, three towns' worth of equipment and costs, now we split it among two towns. I don't think that that is anticipated, that we would have to, if it, say for instance, evolved into a two-town, which it's a lot more likely that it evolves into a, say, a four-town or a five-town. But in the event that it shrank, we would have to shrink the operations, or else redo the numbers and evaluate, are we better off in the regional system or back on our own? And I think that, looking at the risk, it looks like that there's less risk in the thing shrinking than it is having it grow and trying to manage that. And I would say is that nobody can join this without, under the agreement, without the vote of the towns that are members. So it's not like you can just join. You have to come back and get a vote of this board, and you can set conditions depending on who it was. And it may not even be, like, there's another option there. It may not even be just a town. It may be additional duties that are going to be conferred to the regional operations center on behalf of a third party that we would charge for to help defray the costs of operations. So the two different ways that the intermunicipal agreement can be changed to expand it is units can be added, or services can be added that are, you know, more entrepreneurial.
How do you, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. There's also a section that addresses termination or withdrawal, section, is it 12, 10? 12. And it says that following receipt of notice of termination, the remaining towns shall address the impacts caused by termination by either encouraging other parties to join the agreement or by reducing expenses of the Barnstable rec. And that no town, any obligations or expenses incurred before termination still have to be paid by the town that's terminating or withdrawing.
So that leads me to my next question about capital and their building out of the RECC. In the transition time while they build it, and we still have to maintain our own operations, how does, what does that look like in terms of the capital expenses? Do those get dispersed at a level while we're still doing our, our own operations? Or do they not get dispersed until we're all in?
I think this is maybe Chief London would.
They, the grant will fund everything until we, until, over the first three years. So the grant will fund the entire building of it, the purchase of the equipment, the hiring of the director. So until we get into the phase where we would be running dual, we would be running dual operations, because we can't just cut the cord and say everybody's moving over there. So there's going to be that transition period where Yarmouth PD and Fire will still be up while the rec is getting spun up. 911 pays for everything until we move over, and then there's that three-year period that they pay for everything as well.
Great. The only other question I have is with the numbers here. Maybe it's just because the Collins Center is a little bit older, the numbers from the presentation are newer. Would you say that's fair?
Which numbers are you talking about?
So just the number to cost here is 1.15, and then back in the Collins, it says our budget is 1.1. No, wait a minute.
So we provided the, so before we put that budget together, the fire chief and I provided the town administrator with current dispatch salary.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why it's higher.
So, okay.
Collins was using 2022 salaries, and we were using 2023 or 24.
So, but what is interesting is the older, the older Collins Center says that the savings is going to be 803 a year, and yours is 970, and that's with adding those two positions. So, I don't know. I can't, I was trying to follow it, but... Just like the 182, 088 for three years in a row, chances are that that's, those are not made with inflation or rates.
They're not adjusted for the 2.5% normal.
Okay.
There's a couple of things in there that you would have done a little bit differently. I think, you know, during our review, we raised that as a concern. But if you go back through the math, it's on the margin, there's still a huge potential benefit, I think, just from, on a financial standpoint. And then the flip side is the operational improvements.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I don't want to sound, I guess I'm skeptical. And I'm sorry to be that way, but anytime you get into these agreements, it's very important to have, I mean, everything, you know, later, we'll fix that later, we'll fix that later. In reality, sometimes they don't allow you to fix it. It's based on a vote, and when, once you're in it, it's really hard to change it. And that's what, that's what my fear is. You know, again, you know, we've had this, these situations before with the agreements, and you try to project and foresee all the potentials, but it doesn't always, it doesn't always happen that way. So I'm, I know I sound skeptical. I do worry about, I'm, you know, not to go back to 2022, but when I left here, I was very happy that we finally had an agreement, that we all realized that the best course of action was to have one dispatch center in Yarmouth, under our control. And the only thing that had to be determined at that time was where. I don't know what the cost would have been. We knew it wasn't going to be a savings, but it was going to be more efficient. You know, what's, what's happening now is, especially, you know, with the fire department, they have one dispatch, they've got a lot of calls simultaneously, it's not a good situation. So that needs to be rectified, no matter what happens here. I mean, we have to do better. I still am a fan of sticking with Yarmouth. Unfortunately, I think that, you know, the ship sailed in terms of, you know, we don't have, we don't have a cost analysis at this point in time to even know what that would cost, what that would look like. So we're kind of backed up, you know, against a wall, and it's, I'm late to the game, I just got back here, and, you know, I'm trying to get all this information, and I'm very hesitant to say, you know, we'll work out the details later, but we'll sign it now, you know? So that's just where I'm at. Obviously, the savings is great, but there's, there are a lot of benefits, not only the savings, like I said, the having more people there are, you know, I think one of the things that happens now, especially at the fire department, is we have high-ranking officers often that cost us a lot of money, too, that will be a savings to the department. I don't know if that's been factored into this, but because they fill in for the dispatchers at a higher rate. So that, it's going to impact a lot of things. And, you know, they need to have more people there for sure, but I just don't know if this is, this is, if I'm ready to get into this. That's all I have to say.
If I could just add real quickly, so with the combining of Yarmouth Police and Yarmouth Fire, we know that we do not have a facility right now that would be able to do that. So none of the fire stations can do it, and if the police department can't do it because of the configuration of our desks, our computers actually, they sit back-to-back. So the noise would be projected from one into the other, and there's not enough room. So the only option would be to do some sort of study and figure out where we can build out, whether that's at the station or someplace else. And once you get into that, there is no 911 funding available for a combined municipal center. So that would be completely on the shoulders of the town of Yarmouth. By going to the regional center, as the study shows, that they pay for the majority of it, they pay for everything upfront. And in talking to Joe Green up in Duxbury, he's used the grant to pay for all the capital improvements to the center. There's been no cost to any of the municipalities. The other thing that we're looking at is, a couple of years down the road, we have to replace our records management system, which we pay $32,000 a year in maintenance right now. The estimates that we got two years ago was upwards to $150,000 per year for the service because they're no longer doing server-based, it's all, it's all subscription-based now. So it's all going to be in the cloud. So that's something that we're, that I've been working with Bill Scott on, trying to put that into CIP to figure out where that fits somewhere down the road, because that is going to be coming. So the savings that we're going to see over the years are going to be tremendous. They're going to help the town shoulder the responsibilities that we need to maintain the public safety service that we have now. I am, I'm in support of this because I think it's the best thing for our department, it's the best thing for our employees. To go back to the study in 2022, one of the very first things that we spoke about back then was where do our employees land and how do we help them? This is going to give them the benefit, and we've discussed this before, this is going to give them the benefit of promotional opportunities, more training, better work environment. And these, these regional centers are successful throughout the Commonwealth. And it's not as easy for someone to just jump out, because if Yarmouth gives up their PSAP to go into the regional center, we then just can't turn around 10 years down the road and say, this isn't working out for us. Hey, 911, we want to go back. There's going to be a lot of work because they pay for all the infrastructure. So I, I'm not as concerned with the other agencies just saying, hey, we're not interested in doing this. We've had some very candid conversations with the chiefs. We are all on the same page of trying to make this work as efficiently as possible. But without the IMA signed, we're not going to get any more grant money. So the program is not going to move forward. We asked for 800,000. We're at about 600 now, so Barnstable can start working on some of the efforts that they want to do. But the IMA is for three towns, and without it being signed, 911 is not going to give us any more money. So we kind of, we have to, we're at that point where, to move this forward, we need to make a decision so that we can actually get it going.
So what happens if we sign the IMA and we are not able to, I'm just playing it out, we're not able to get to something that we're comfortable with in terms of a transition plan? Then what?
We haven't given up our 911 at that point.
Okay.
So that's going to, and to the town administrator's point, that's years away. That's, this is going to take, this is going to take a long time. The grant process for a regional center, the grant applications are due in March, and they're awarded in July. So the funding that we have now is inadequate to do everything that we need to do, so we have to write another grant. If, in perfect world, the IMA is signed, 911 will now look at us as a real entity, and they will award more money in March. If the IMA is not signed, we're not going to get any more funding from them until we get to that point. We had to get the additional funding, I had to draft a cover letter to 911 explaining what our process was and how come the IMA wasn't signed yet. And it was just because we were reading the IMAs that July 1st was the deadline, it was actually June 14th of the grant, and Barnstable submitted paperwork showing that Sandwich and Barnstable had agreed to it. But the IMA isn't signed by them yet because it's a three municipality IMA, so they won't sign it until everybody's on board.
So you're comfortable with the fact that if we signed it and we didn't work it out, we would have no, nothing lost?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
For now?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Well, I was very impressed with the very first presentation of this, and I'm now feeling more reassured because we have Elizabeth Leyden here and Chief Lennon explaining how we're protected, because this is just the first stage, and then there's a transitional plan. There are many points to negotiate. There are many points to say, "No, we need this" rather than that. I can't see how this, this would not work well unless the parties in this town and the parties in Barnstable sent terrible communicators to be on the board that governs it. But I, I just don't think you're going to do that because you care greatly about this and you think it's a big improvement. I remember being very touched the first time you presented this. I wasn't even on the board then. When the, the savings were indicated, yes, there were savings, but that you emphasized, both chiefs, how much this would improve response times and how response times and the weight of people for whom minutes might be crucial would get help sooner. And I think that that's a major consideration, especially, I say this as an old person, in a town with so many old people. I think it's a really good idea. And it seems to me that with the research that the Finance Committee and the Financial Director have done in terms of what happens with benefits and how they get allocated, I think this, I mean, some more I's have been dotted and T's crossed. I mean, some things, we won't know about this until we're further in the process, but I see that we seem to have a guarantee that we're not irrevocably in a process that will go on for the next dozen years and we can't get out of it. It seems the transitional agreement will be very important. So, I'm a strong supporter.
Good. I go way back on this where even within the town of Yarmouth, we couldn't reach a consensus between our three chiefs, and that went on for a very long time. And I don't think that was productive for anybody, really. And there's a lot of political forces that worked behind that, which is understandable. You know, who's going to make the calls? What building safer? What if this? What if that? And so, it really is refreshing to see that we have our, our local chiefs trying to get a resolution to this and to try to gain efficiency and save money and to make it, make the operation more professional. So, I commend you all for, for that hard work, and I, I'm sure there's forces pulling and pushing at all of you as well as the rest of us involved in this process. And I'm encouraged that the Finance Committee has looked at this and relying on their expertise to some degree that this is a good thing for the town of Yarmouth. And any kind of new entity, whether it be a school district or something like this, there's going to be nuances that, very frankly, even perhaps have not been thought of or have haven't perhaps been vetted in great detail. But I think the way this is structured and with the transitional agreement and with our expertise of our council, we'll be able to work through those things. I think everybody has got to look at not, not only what each town has to lose, but more importantly, what each town has to gain by working cooperatively. So, I mean, the best way to keep an operation successful is, is everybody acting good faith, everybody acting for the common good, everybody acting in the mutual interest of not only themselves, but the part, their partners. Treat your partner fairly and respectfully. I think you can expect the same thing back in this situation, so I'm encouraged by the personalities that are involved also in this process. So, that, those are my comments. I don't know. You looking for a vote on this?
Yes, they need it by July 1st.
July 1st?
Yeah.
Okay.
Squeak.
Do we have any proposed language or anything like that? Or do we just?
Approve the intermunicipal agreement revised 3524.
Say that again?
The, to approve the intermunicipal agreement for emergency communications and dispatch services by and among the towns of Barnstable, Sandwich and Yarmouth. Final draft.
Just to approve the agreement?
Yep.
That's all we're looking to do?
That's all.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it is a lot.
That's all.
Yeah. It is. But I'll just say, too, as a footnote, look, look how long the DY Regional School District Agreement's been kicking around.
Yeah, we can't get it changed, Mike.
No, and the various iterations it went through, and it still needs work.
Yeah, but we can't, we have no leverage to get anything changed.
One of the reasons for that is because the School Committee has got to initiate any amendments to the agreement.
That's another story.
They're not responsible for the schools.
So... And I, I think the towns were last discussing that if both towns agreed to amend the agreement, that should be enough, and we shouldn't really need the School Committee to do it. But that, that's really an obstacle.
That's a change in the agreement.
Huh?
That's a change in the agreement.
It is. Change isn't always bad, Tracy.
No, it's not always bad.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Regional Emergency Communications Center intermunicipal agreement as presented.
Okay, is that good enough? Yes. Okay, do I have a second?
I wish we had a full board tonight.
I will second it. I will second it to take some of the pain away.
That's all right. As long as there's no, I mean...
Let me ask you this question. Could, if it were to go, could we, could we pass this with a two-to-one vote, or do we have to have a majority of the board, which would be three?
You need three.
I think we probably need a majority of the board, but that's...
Majority of the board.
Of the board that's present, so it's a quorum of the board.
Are you, are you sure it's a majority present?
No, I wouldn't say that. We've never done that before.
That would be, that would be a two-member vote. Well, let's try and see what happens.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll vote for it based on the fact that we have, we still can, we still have...
You still got that.
But it would have been nice that our members who aren't here would have had, had submitted their comments and, you know, their opinions before, so I don't know where they stand. And I don't want to be the one to hold it up if it's something, I know, I think Dorcas is in favor of it, so...
And she only got sick in the late afternoon, so...
Yeah, it would be nice, though, to know where they stood.
She looked at the agenda.
You're not, you're not suggesting she's playing hooky.
She looked at the agenda and called 911? Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call only because this is a very important vote. Tracy?
Aye.
I vote aye. Trace?
Aye.
All right, so it passes by a vote of three to zero. Two members absent. Thank you for all your hard work. I, I mean that from most sincerely.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, I appreciate your hard work. Please don't take it that way. I just, like I said, I have, I have hesitations on, on, on making sure we, you know, do our due diligence and cross our Ts and dot our Is, and I just, it's just a lot of loose ends, so I'm uncomfortable with that, but it's not a reflection of the work we've done.
Get the answers we want. I think it'll, I know there's, there's reluctance or skepticism, but I think this allows us to get those answers.
Okay, good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
We have great trust that when bumps come up in the road, you'll be smart enough to work them out.
Yeah.
I know, Tracy, this is not an easy one. Remember you cited that old P provision? You cited a page in the Collins Report.
Yeah, it was page 37.
37?
But it's, I think it's, it's the current 35% of the benefits.
It's 37, okay. Just wanted to review that. Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
We're moving forward here.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Nice to put a, a face with the name.
Thanks, Tony Leyden. I really appreciate you being here and your help with this.
You're welcome. Everyone, have a good night.
Okay. Next item is discussion slash vote, investment policy for town, um, town funds, special revenue, town general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and capital funds. We have here our Finance Director, Jennifer Mullen, who is going to present this to us.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Thank you for having me. There was a copy of the investment policy in your packet, so I'll just briefly just give you a rundown. There was an existing policy from years ago, and it was very lengthy, and it was a, well, I'll walk through, with the investment of our funds, you have to excuse me, I'm much better at eight o'clock in the morning than I am at 10 o'clock at night. So, I just have to get that out there, so just bear with me. So, we are governed pretty strictly by Mass General laws with the investment of, of our funds, and I look at it in really like two different ways. You have your general fund revenue, and then you have your trust fund revenue. And so, your general fund revenue, you have to keep it liquid. You know, the best practice is, the, the priority is safety, liquidity, and then yield. You don't put interest rate first, so you're not investing in high-risk investments. It has to be safe, it has to be liquid, and then you look at interest rates, particularly with the warrant process and with the bills we pay, so we, that's why we need to keep it liquid. And then we look at interest rates. And so, and the investment policy in front of you is, it was vetted with our investment advisors. It's an investment policy general that, you know, a lot of communities use because we are so highly regulated, and it does cite Mass General law. So, that's really the investment of the general special revenue in your enterprise and capital project funds, if you, if you look through it. Really with your, I do want to say that our Town Treasurer's done a phenomenal job with our investments. As you know, the last couple of years, the interest rates have increased, so we have gained really good investment in, income in our general fund, and that's estimated on our local estimated receipts. With construction, there's a section in here, basically what it says is that we have to be careful of arbitrage. And what is arbitrage? We can't borrow money at a certain interest rate and then earn higher than that interest rate. We can't make money off our money. That's arbitrage. Again, we're highly regulated. So, we want to make sure when I come in front of the board and we borrow, I've done a lot of work of where we are in the project, how much are we going to be spending in the next year, to make sure that we keep, you know, that we have enough cash, but we, that we don't have too much cash. And that's really what this policy states. And then we get into your trust funds and your stabilization funds. So, our prior investment policy had a cap on our stabilization funds, and essentially what it said, if I could read through it, I didn't quite understand it. I wasn't here when it was voted, but our investment advisors have it, is that in our stabilization funds, we needed to keep $4 million not invested as a trust fund, but in an escrow account, kind of like your general fund revenue, because they wanted to keep it liquid, and that's what the old investment policy stated. But when you invest in your trust funds, which is, you know, some perpetual care in your stabilization funds, you can invest them for a longer term because you can gain a better market value because you don't need for them to be liquid because they're savings accounts. The only way you can really tap into them is if you go to town meeting, so you don't need to keep them liquid. And so, that's why I changed the investment policy. I simplified it. I took off that $4 million cap. The other issue is when you invest in trust funds, we only can invest in what's a legalist that's approved by the state, so we're not, you know, investing in cryptocurrency and things like that. You know, we're very, very conservative, and we have to as we cite Mass General law. So, that was the main reason that I wanted to get this in front of the board and have them vote the investment policy, because what I found is, as we're funding, we're pre-funding the wastewater, we're putting the money into a stabilization fund because we want to be able to gain better market value because it's for the longer term when we start paying back those bonds. But I was kind of hamstrung because I had to keep $4 million in escrow. And so, we're not, we weren't, you know, the money that we're making on that $4 million was really nothing. So, that was the main reason for the change, and plus, I wanted to simplify it and really talk about, like here, like I said, we talk about construction debt, where we didn't, bond proceeds, arbitrage, and, and the original policy didn't do that.
So, I remember, I remember, I was here when we did that original policy, and one of the reasons that we did it was, they were working, Rich and Ed were working with S&amp;P. We, after we put those policies in place, we actually increased our bond rating, so it had something to do with the bonding. I'm not sure if the $4 million was part of that, but we've...
What it is, is, is that you need to have the complete financial policies, including the investment policy, and if you don't have one, they downgrade your bond rating.
Yeah.
So, I, I think this addresses some of the needs we have, but it's not, it's going to be viewed very positively by the municipal credit risk agencies. It's, it's a conservative policy. It's in keeping with the Mass General laws, but if you don't have a policy, that's when you get in trouble.
Well, I think we, we didn't have the money in stabilization at that time. We were coming out of a, a really bad time, and we had really used a lot of our reserves, so maybe that was just, so I think maybe the rating is based on a percentage of your budget to the reserves that you have anyway, so...
Yeah, I can comment on that. In my prior community, we had a AAA bond rating, and I was there when we gained the AAA bond rating, and I wrote those policies. And so, this is the policy. It's kind, it's, you know, changed to really gear towards Yarmouth, but it was the same type of policy I used in my other community, and, and Bob is right. Standard and Poor's wants to make sure that you have policies, written, adopted policies that you adhere to, and they do, and they do look at them. Our policy that we had, I did run it by a couple people, you know, a couple colleagues, and really hadn't seen anything like that before. It was very lengthy. It talked about certain investments that you really can't do any, anyways in municipal government. So, that's why we wanted to simplify it, but Bob is correct. With Standard and Poor's, they want to make sure that you have a policy. And so, when we go in front of Standard and Poor's again, they're going to look at this favorably because we'll, we'll be reviewing our policies this year, and then having, if we make any changes, we'll have the select board, you know, request to adopt it. And so, then that always will help because they know that we're reviewing them, and they're just not using a policy from like 2015.
Great. The other, I don't know if you were here when Norm Holcomb spoke in public. He talked about it.
I did hear him.
About the investment of enterprise funds and the responsible, the, who's responsible for it. I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, I did hear his public comment. So, enterprise funds, so the money that we have in the bank that we have, that we keep liquid because we're paying bills, like with the golf course, right? That's just, an enterprise fund is a separate business entity, so we just restrict those funds. We put it in a different accounting account, if you will, right? So, it has its different general GL number and all that. And so, we do invest that, and that stays with the fund. So, we are earning investment, and we've earned very good investment income over the last couple of years. Now, I will say that I was around, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about that, is back in 2008 and 2009, if everybody remembers, how, you know, the market took a huge dip and people were estimating their investment income on their, you know, and using it to balance their budgets. And what happened was the interest rates just went down, and then we had to cut our budgets because we had to decrease our interest, the interest rates. So, right now, we're in a high-interest rate environment, so we're super conservative the way that we estimate our investment income, and, and it should be that way. You don't want to, I will tell you that last year, we did take in a little over a million. This year, we're on track. We're over a million and a half, and this is just for our general fund. And so, but if we, if the interest rates go down, then that goes down, right? So, you just have to be careful. You don't want to estimate that full amount to balance your budget because then you're running in... because then you're running into, oh, we have to cut it. And it goes to free cash. That's really where it goes. So any of your actuals over your estimates. But, yeah, we, our treasurer's doing a phenomenal job. She has a good relationship with the banks. Our financial advisors are doing a great job. We use Rockland Trust for our trust funds. We do get, I do want to say we do have monthly reports that go out to the boards and the finance committee on our investment income. It's on our revenue trending report.
In terms of the responsibility, he was mentioning about the finance committee having a responsibility to look at that. I'm not sure if that's in our charter, but I just didn't know if you wanted to speak to that.
Sure, I will. The responsibility of this, really under Mass General law, falls with the treasurer. So the treasurer has the responsibility to invest funds, really can't give that to anybody else. We, in government, we have a separation of the treasurer and the accountant, and there's very strict controls where they can't overlap. The finance committee, and I've been working with finance committees for years, they're really looking to make sure that we're spending our money, you know, correctly, and that it's affordable. They usually don't review policy, especially investment policy, because it strictly lays with the treasurer, just having this policy. And again, we're highly governed by Mass General law, so sometimes when you start talking about it, they want you to do things that you can't, you know? It, again, it's very restrictive, and usually the finance committee does not get involved in policy. It's the board that votes the policy. And that, you know, the select board makes policy, and then we make sure that policy happens. But the finance committee usually is just looking at, you know, our funds and our appropriations, making recommendations from town meeting, looking at our capital plan, looking at our budget. They get all the monthly reporting, but when it comes to policy, it's a lot different. You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation, and I think it's great to have this in writing for transparency purposes. It should be something you can give to people who have questions or who want you to invest in something that would be illegal. Good job.
Thank you.
Jennifer, has our investment practices in the past, since you've been here, has our Finance Director been consistent with this policy? Or have they been, have they fallen short of this policy?
Well, the old policy, I will tell you, the prior policy, which our financial advisors have, which really, they're just in control of our trust funds, adhered to that policy as much as they could. But there are things in the policy they couldn't because we're stuck, we have to adhere to the legalist. So the state comes up with the legalist, and the legalist is what we can invest in. They tell us what we can invest in. Our financial advisors, you know, tell us what percentage it should be in, whatever that legalist is. I do believe that they probably adhered to it. A lot of times, with general fund and special revenue fund and enterprise funds investments, you always want to make sure, again, you go back to the policy of safety, liquidity, yield. So you want to make sure your money's safe, so you want to make sure it's collateralized. So we will take a lesser interest rate to make sure our money is collateralized. And it is a note in the financial statement, so you can kind of read that. And we look at that pretty closely every year. So, yeah, for the most part, because it's so restrictive, we have been adhering to Mass General law. But, again, the policy that we had before, which was governing us, they were holding to it as much as they could. Is if that makes any sense, and does that answer your question?
I noticed some of these investments are, I believe, if I read it correctly, it's kind of condensed the writing, but are covered by FDIC and other forms of insurance.
Right.
And others, it seems, are not.
Well, like, they're collateralized. So even though, like, FDIC, I think it's like $250,000, right, per bank? But we have millions of dollars in the bank, so what we do is we collateralize them. In other words, the bank gives us a letter that ensures those funds, more than the $250, but what they'll do is we'll get a lesser interest rate on our money. So we want to make sure that the money stays safe.
So they'll ensure the funds and then probably reduce the yield?
Yes.
By offsetting costs?
Yes.
I remember years ago, probably not too many people realize, remember this, but I'm trying to think of her title. I think she was the town accountant. She bought these subordinated capital debentures from Century Federal Savings Bank that went upside down. And the town lost, I know it was over a million bucks.
I've run into a couple of issues in my career.
That was when it was an elected office.
Yeah. So I've run into a couple of issues in my career where, you know, the treasurer, and it's the treasurer really, might, you know, buy some, they can't really do that anymore. It's just, I mean, they could, but they're not. If that may, and we balance cash, and, you know, we have it all pretty, pretty safe. But I've run into a couple of issues in the past where, you know, they might have done something like that. We might put money into a CD for three to six months, you know, with our general fund revenue, with a reputable bank that we have, you know, contracts with.
When Norm Holcomb spoke earlier at a public comment, he, in terms of the way I interpret his comments, I think he was saying that there's millions of dollars to be had that aren't, and again, this is inferential on my part, that aren't being taken advantage of.
Right.
What's your commentary on that?
Sure. So when you look at your past investment income, and I'll talk, taken advantage of, when your trust funds, when they're invested in, you know, the legalist, and you get a market value, and we post that market value monthly. We, so your capital stabilization fund, so your capital stabilization fund will just grow and grow. So when we get ready to spend it, the money is there, right? So that's how your trust funds work. There's nothing you can do. The only way you can get that money that you're earning, your investment income from your trust funds is if you go to town meeting and appropriate it. So I think what you're talking about is your general fund revenue with the millions of dollars, right? So, we estimate investment income every year. So next year, in FY '25, I invest, I, we estimated it at $350,000. Now, we brought in a million last year, and we're bringing in a million five this year. So, yeah, the money is there. However, if I increase that estimate to $1 million and the interest rates go down, now we have a deficit. Now we have to cut the budget. So we want to be conservative with those, and that's what happened back in 2008 and 2009. The community I was in, I think I was estimating, I can't remember. I just remember there was like, the interest rates just started going down, and then we were like, we have to cut the budget by $400,000 because we can't estimate that much. So it is getting rolled into free cash. We did, I will say, we did increase it this year, but we've had two fiscal years of high interest rates. And that's because we're doing a really good job with our investing. And you don't, you just have to, you know, the philosophy usually is just being conservative and not estimating more than, if I estimated $1 million in the budget and we're spending $1 million in the budget, and then your interest rates go down, which they will go down eventually at some point, now you have a deficit.
I don't think his comments were about the projections or the estimate. His was more about the dollars that we, he didn't think we were investing, like, we weren't, and I'm just guessing, but I got the impression he was thinking that we weren't investing all of our funds to the degree that we could.
Well, again, we are. I mean, because the, and the best way to put this, really, is, so the money has to stay in a bank, right? Your general fund revenue is in a bank. That's an investment in and of itself. I don't have the percentage rates, but we do, every year, we do a report for the Department of Revenue, and it'll tell you every bank we have, and it will tell you what our interest rate is. So we are investing it. Does he think we can get more? I'll go back to the policy, which is adopted from Mass General law, is that you have to keep it safe, you have to keep it collateralized. And because of that, you will get a lesser interest rate than if you just went out and it wasn't collateralized. So we are required, the first thing we have to make sure is their taxpayers' money and that it's insured.
Right, and a lot of it is encumbered, so I don't know how you could, there's a portion of your overall general fund that's encumbered, so I'm not sure how you could invest in that. He said enterprise fund, which you've already discussed.
It's the same, yeah, so the money's in the bank, and it gets posted to your accounting, and you'll see investment income. And it goes, at the end of the year, when you close it out, it goes to your undesignated fund balance, or it will go to your retained earnings. So that's where it flows into.
And it actually goes into general fund?
Yep. General, yep, the general fund, and then your enterprise funds, it becomes part of your retained earnings for appropriation. And then, in the general fund, it's your undesignated fund balance, which is the basis of your free cash.
I make a motion, we endorse the investment policy in our packet.
Have a second?
Second.
Any others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone to poll?
Aye.
Passed by a vote of 3-0, two members absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. You got to hang around. I think we got another one with you.
I got the next one, too.
Poor Elizabeth, she worked on this also.
We got a...
She did. Elizabeth did, has been great to work with.
Construction for Phase 1 of the SOAR project.
Sounds exciting.
Yes. So, I did write a memo for this. So we're in the process of going, you know, so as you know, we're we're doing construction right now for the SOAR project, right? So, everybody sees the roads are closed, and so, you know, Jeff's got his hands full of managing that construction project. And so what I'm doing is more of administrative. So I'm, you know, looking over the SOAR project administratively, bills and all that. But another part of that is SOAR assessment betterments. So there's a whole process that you have to follow in order to assess a betterment for, you know, commercial and homeowners. And so, it was started, and I started here in October, so there were some things that we needed to do. So in our calendar of events, right now, we have to, well, yeah, we kind of do. If you want to assess betterments, the board needs to adopt the order for construction for Phase 1 of the SOAR project. And so, really, this is just an administrative exercise. And what this does is it lays out, and this was written by Elizabeth Lyden, I worked with her on it, and we actually worked with a couple attorneys from the Department of Revenue. So it's been, you know, well-vetted. And so what we want to do is, well, this lays out, you know, all the roads that are affected with the SOAR project for contracts, 2 through, 1 through 6, 2 through 6. And it lays out on the map that's attached. So, and we have to do this in order to eventually assess a SOAR betterment. And this will be filed at the Registry of Deeds, and it gives you all the lists, it gives you the list of all the roads, not just the roads, but the addresses that are affected. So we're able to, we'll file this with the Registry of Deeds. And then what we will, come back to the board, we'll have, the board is acting as SOAR commissioners, and you're acting as SOAR commissioners with this exercise. We'll come back to you for a betterment policy. We still have a lot more to look at, particularly with waiting for the bids to come in with the collection, with the plant, with the wastewater treatment plant. But this is the next step in the administration of, so we will be able to assess a betterment at some point.
Is it typical to do this prior to actually having that done? I'm taking Howard's as an example.
Sure.
Because Howard put their bid out saying all these things were going to be, the bids came in different. These, they connected half the houses. So why would we file the Registry of Deeds to a house that potentially won't?
No, it's a great question. I want, I want to point out that we don't have a money amount attached to this. So this isn't going to be filed, this is just going to be a general filing with the Registry of Deeds, just so they have it on file. It's not going, there's not a money amount that's going to be, it's not the estimate that's usually filed. So what usually happens, is you do have a good question. So usually what happens, and you have a wastewater treatment facility, and then you go to lay the SOAR, the SOAR down, you know, either the main road with commercial or residential. You go out to bid, you get an estimate for that bid. And so it's easy to have an estimate that would be filed with each property. And that gets filed at the Registry of Deeds. It doesn't have to, but it usually does. It's usually the course of action. And then, once the project is completed and we look at all the final costs, then those costs are leaned on those properties, but it can't be more than the estimate. So I think that's what you're talking about. This is preliminary. This is even before the estimate, because we don't have the bids in yet, so we don't know how much it's really going to cost.
That's why I'm asking, what the impotence of doing it now is at all?
Well, it is, because it's in Mass General law that we have to do it. It's part of...
Why wouldn't we do it at the same time? Don't, do most communities do it at the same time that they, that they put the assessment on it?
Well, I don't know what most communities do. Usually, this would be filed before the estimate. So why wasn't this, are you asking why they didn't do this last year? Is that your question?
Actually, I don't think it should be done at all until we know that they're getting a betterment.
Okay, so this preserves the town's right to assess a betterment on these properties because when the financial plan was, when the whole plan was, went to town meeting, there is a portion of betterments that are going to be assessed because it's going to help pay for that $207 million, because it's not a debt exclusion. So we have to get that, you know, we have to receive that money. So this just preserves our right to do that. We're probably not going to assess a betterment probably, well, until the wastewater treatment plant's built because they have to be able to take, you know, it has to be working. But this just protects our right to do it under Mass General law. We don't have an estimate, so that's why we're not filing estimates. We're just filing the plan with the Registry of Deeds, which is laid out in Mass General law, Chapter 83, Section 23.
But it's attached to each one of these people's things, correct?
Well, we're just, it's not going to be attached because we don't have an estimate.
Okay, so that's when it gets attached?
Yes.
I just want to make sure the homeowners don't see their paperwork on their property and wonder what's going on if they may not even get it.
Right. No, you're absolutely right. It's a great question. I want to make sure I'm answering it correctly because that was my question as well.
The plan, the plan overall is on record, but it's not attached to a particular...
Exactly. We did put the list of properties, we took out the owners' names. But it, there isn't a money amount here. We're just filing this whole plan with the registry to say, hey, at some point, there's going to probably maybe be a betterment, you know, on this property. This is the only thing that gets filed. Because you can't, you know...
You can't assess it without it being on record.
Exactly.
I understand that. I just don't know why, I just don't know the timing and why it's done so far in advance, why it's not...
Because construction has started. That's why, because it's called an...
Only on a couple of these contracts. We're doing Contract 7, and we may never even get there.
Right, but...
That's where I get nervous.
Okay, so let me back up a little bit. We're looking at this project. So even though, you're right, we've started on construction on Contracts 2 and 3, we're looking at this contract, we're looking at this project as one for the purpose of assessing betterments. We can't really break it up because we don't know how much the wastewater treatment plant's going to cost. So in order to preserve our right, because we need an order for construction to start, to have construction, that's why it's done this way.
So, tell me, I don't know, I don't, I'm not, I don't know the answer to this. I'm just saying, the purpose of having this on, so if somebody were to purchase a home.
Right.
And somebody did some research on that piece of property.
Right.
Would they know that a betterment's going to be assessed based on your filing?
No, it's not going to be filed by property. That's what I was talking to the attorneys about. We have the list, but it's not going to be filed as per property because we don't have, the only way you can...
Look it up with the town, because we do have a list.
Right.
Anybody who's in Phase 1.
I guess I'm just stuck on the why right now.
And I just want to say that a part of the process that we went through on this with the vetting is, is we sat together first, and our first sense was, look, we've got all of these bids that have to go out to get the final amounts. Can't we just wait on the whole thing and do it later? And the answer to that was, under the Mass... And the answer to that was, under the mass general laws, you have to do the advance sort of a notice that you're working on it, or else when you get to the end, now you no longer have the right to do it. So it's a preliminary step. We thought, you know, why can't we just avoid it? It seems logical, but they said, no, and we worked this out with, between the attorneys, Department of Revenue, and our own town council, and this is the way that, like Jennifer says, it preserves our right, when we do get the amounts, then to go in and follow through with the financial plan. Otherwise, we'll have to come up with a new financial plan, because we won't be able to do the betterment part of it. So it's, and, and the other thing I would just say is that, you know, part of what you're dealing with, is that these betterment laws...
Yeah.
Are so archaic. I don't think they've been updated in like fifty years.
No, it's true, that's what they were saying.
...condoluted.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I've seen betterments recorded, I mean, not current betterments, but older betterments, like road improvements. And ultimately, they do have a specific cost per property, and how much per year it's gonna cost you on your taxes, and so forth. I think, and I'm no expert in this area, believe me, but it sounds too like, in addition to preserving your right, it's identifying the particular properties that are gonna be assessed. I think that's, that's another benefit of having this document approved, because if you're on the list, you can expect that there's gonna be a betterment at some point in time. And I think, I think Tracy's point's well taken, the law doesn't always follow the practical path through the woods.
I agree.
Obviously, what would make more sense is to do it all at once, where you have your cost and your, you know, your property, but if the laws require us to do this as a preliminary step, then I don't see any other option for us but to do it.
I will say, we did spend some time on this, and with the same question that you had in trying to, and working with Elizabeth Leyden, and then bringing in the DOR, and even the DOR was saying, you know, like Bob was saying, these laws are, are very old, they haven't been updated, but this is the process.
Okay.
So there is, and for you to sign it, I don't think you need a vote, you just need to adopt the order and sign it, because there's a place for your signature. But I think Mary Alice has a lot of that, right? When you're...
We should vote to adopt and approve it. That's the, that's what you're signing, that you've approved the order, and...
Mr. Chairman, I, I vote, I move that we adopt the Order for Construction for Sewer Phase, Phase One. It seems like it's the next thing after this that will involve all the details, but this seems like a simple procedural thing tonight.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
So Jennifer, when this gets recorded, is it gonna get recorded in this form? It's gonna be this incomplete?
Yes, it will be.
I'm not trying to rehash anything or create issues, but this is pretty much what's gonna go on record, is what's here.
Right, that's correct.
At this point.
Yep.
And that's to preserve our rights to assess these properties...
That's correct.
Upon completion of the project.
Of Phase One, yes.
Of Phase One, which would include the treatment facility?
Exactly.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously by a vote of three in favor, none against, two members absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you, Jen.
Okay, Town Administrator Merit Pay, I think we're gonna have to pass on that one. We don't have Mark and Dorcas. What that involves really is a merit pay based on Bob's last evaluations.
A question, though, Mike, isn't there a formula, depending on whether you get one, two, three, or four, isn't there then a pay formula?
There's, there's a range. The, the early years of the contract had a specific dollar amount, and then I believe the year we're in, you correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, I don't have the contract with me, but I think they say that that's negotiable. And then we have, we have some guidelines in town for department heads and so forth, based on evaluations. And I think he falls in like the, again, Bob, correct me, the five, six category for percentage. And we appointed a subcommittee, me and Dorcas, and Bob's request was five percent, Dorcas and I were in concurrence with that. We wanted to get the evals done, so that the people that did them were here for a full year, because we said we could deal with the board later. We would need three votes, and I think we've got them, and if we don't, even, I mean, either one of you could vote to, in favor of it, even though, um...
Well, it looks like we're holding the fort tonight, so...
Yeah, so, um, I don't know, if Bob doesn't mind, it would be retro to April 10th, I believe.
Yeah, I want him to get his money.
It was his anniversary date.
He'll get it.
And the, and the, and the, and I can bring this stuff in if you wish, if the evaluations were exceptionally high.
Stellar, yep. Okay, I, I make a motion to approve the Town Administrator Merit Pay increase, according to previously worked out arrangements that the Chair understands.
I think we should wait.
Tracy wants to wait. We'll wait, we can do it. But I appreciate your willingness to do that, because if we need a vote, then we'll be outside. All right, so we'll pass on that, we'll put that over to the next, uh, next date.
It's not like they had the information in advance, so, I, I didn't have any information in advance on that, so they would be hearing it, well, Mark would be hearing it for the first time, so...
Okay. Um, all right, anybody wanna do the minutes?
Well, I wasn't here, so I'll only vote if you need me for a necessity.
October 10th, 23, you wanna pass, let's pass on that.
We'll have to.
I don't think either one of you guys were here then. Upcoming agenda review, does anybody wanna pass on that?
I actually have something I'd, I'd like to suggest that we put in, and that's introducing the problem of the golf hazard, with people getting hit with golf balls on High Bank Street, High Bank Road. We've obviously had, you know, a person who was hit, but it turns out that there are many people who avoid that route during golf season, just because they don't want their car stunted. So I'd love to see that on a, a future agenda.
Okay.
The other thing, I have a question about, so I think this is not an agenda item, but I think we need Bob's advice on this, and that is, the person who wrote us about the, being denied the veterans discount...
Oh, yeah.
That's for the, that's for the beach and dump stickers, and that person was qualified to get it, but it turned out that there was some, like, odd little thing that said, the person, the recipient must have a veterans plate, but he doesn't have a veterans plate, because he doesn't want to pay more money for...
They just changed, they just changed the law.
A license plate.
But that's our policy, so, I mean, that's, they're following our policy, and now veterans plates are free, so maybe he'll get one. So you'd have to bring up a change in the policy.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm asking how to do that, although with veterans plates now free, that might be different.
We had a, a few different issues, sort of, the veterans was, was one of them, and then there's also the issue of the commercial vehicles and the size of them, and another beach issue was the, the people with their homes in trust, and, and I know that they're working right now on some updates to the policies for the stickers, and that those items, there's a handful of, like, just little points that need to be sanded down, and so I, I think that that's a process that's ongoing now, and we will have that on an upcoming agenda to review those with you.
I wasn't sure, it seemed to me it probably comes to Board of Selectmen, but on the other hand, I'm aware it's in a department as well, so, uh, uh, look for that on a future agenda item, and I, I feel bad, this, this guy was a civil servant after being a veteran in some very bad times, and I just felt terrible that we were asking him to pay a vanity plate price.
We don't ask him to pay a vanity plate price, the RMV does. What he's saying is that he doesn't want to, the, the, actually, until the most recent bill was passed at the state legislature, if you wanted a veteran plate, you had to pay more for it, is what he was saying. That's a state thing at the registry, not, that wasn't us, but now it's, that's no longer.
Well, it just, it just seems like it was maybe an improvable policy on our part, but I'm delighted to think that the, the veterans plates now won't be of extra cost to veterans whom we're trying to help.
Anything else on the agenda review?
Well, I just want to make sure, July 20, everyone is, got that locked and loaded?
Yeah, I see that on there.
We're all set for...
It's nine o'clock, isn't it?
Nine, yeah, usually we have coffee at eight forty-five-ish, and...
Well, the upcoming agendas look better than the past two, because I have to tell you, the past two agendas have had way too much stuff on it, and I'm, I personally am in favor of meeting on a weekly basis, instead of having meetings like tonight, it's ten minutes to eleven, and unfortunately...
This agenda's definitely too long.
These things take time, they deserve diligence and time, and sometimes I feel like we're rushing through, so...
I agree, I think we gotta look at, I know, for example, ZBA, they passed a rule, they were here forever, they said they're not starting anything past a certain hour.
But it's, that's unfair to, like, that's hard, because you have people come and they sit here for three, three hours, and then they have to come...
We have to do something, because I agree with you, I mean, we've been here since 5:30, and it's, what?
It's ten minutes to eleven.
Almost eleven, that's six and a half hours.
Which is fine for me, but the, these employees have to get up and come back to work tomorrow.
Too long.
It's a lot.
I remember when I first was elected back in 2013, we met at seven.
Yep.
Eric Tolly was the chairman. Eric said, let's move it to six, we'll get out earlier.
We didn't. How did that work out?
Half of it worked.
The earlier part. Not that getting out earlier, just starting early.
Is it a curse of Eric, that's exactly my point. So, you're right, Tracy.
But I, I think what happened, too, is a, a little bit like the last couple, two meetings, we, we did the agenda review, and it was like, I, I think we should put this on, I would say we should put this on it.
We just did it tonight, for the next one, we just took two things off, your merit and the minutes that go...
No, I understand your point. What we might be able to try to do, Bob, and this is just talking off the top of my head, is to try to, when we get a lot of licensing requests, as Tracy says, have a separate meeting, and knock out four or five licenses.
Oh, that would work.
Because you never know where those things are gonna go.
Yeah, I think it's...
And those are hearing things that specify a time, so that way the time wouldn't be messed up, I think that's, that's good.
We advertise them all at the same time.
Talk about that, but your point is more than well taken, Tracy, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with you. We got through a lot, but volume isn't the only indicator, as Tracy pointed, some of these things deserve a lot of time and attention. So anyway, we're off for the second, and the twentieth, we have an extra meeting on Saturday, nine to one. And we have a meeting the 23rd, the night, we have a lot of stuff coming up in July. So let's, Bob and I work something out and bring it back to you, only because of the lateness of the hour.
And I just want to check, as a newbie, our next meeting is July 9?
Our next date is, 9th, yes. July 9th. So, Bob, on the consent agenda, and I'll explain this, I would like to pull out the first item, Chamber of Commerce Annual Request for Approval of Special Entertainment License for the Summer Concert Series and for Fee Waiver. I'd like to act on that separately, and I'll tell you why. What I'd like to do is add to that motion on that item, that the licensing, licensing chair would have the discretion on rescheduling events directly with the chamber without having a full board hearing. And I started that last year, because a lot of times you get, you'll have a Tuesday concert, it'll rain, and they'll say, can we do it Thursday?
Oh.
Well, I can't get the board together by Thursday, and generally, the answer's sure, no problem. But technically, I think it would be better if we added that.
It sounds good, that just shortened some more meetings.
Well, I need to pull out the Riverwalk at Resource Eastman, I'm not sure that I need to, but, again, the company I work for has the contract with the Riverwalk, so I don't want to vote on that.
What do you want to do with that?
I need to pull, I can't vote on that.
Want to say nothing on that one?
Yeah.
So we'll pull that one out, too. We're gonna have like, two votes on a consent item?
So I'd, I'd move Item C, D, and E on the consent agenda.
What's that?
I will move Items C, D, and E, the Division of Natural Resources, the Fire Department donations, and the Recreation donations.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? So C, D, and E are approved by a three zero vote.
Because I don't know about the EverSource, how important that is.
Can I, uh, have an amendment to Item A with, again, allowing the...
Licensing Chair to...
Chair to, um, what's the word I want to say, authorize any reschedules without a, a, a full board hearing?
Okay, I move concerning Consent Agenda A, that the licensing chair be approved flexibility about date changes.
Right, without the necessity of a full hearing?
Oh, without necessity of a full board meeting.
Okay. I have a second.
How does that work for the neighbors, though? Like, this is, this, how does that work for the neighbors, though? I'm just wondering, I mean, does...
I mean, it's really...
It's not a public, it's not really, it's just a formality.
The worst problem I had was, once there was a rain out, and then they called and said, how about Thursday? I said, fine. And then they called on Thursday, said the band can't make it, can you do Wednesday? That's the most, you know, that, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Aye.
So A passes with that amendment. We're gonna, um...
Do they need that today?
What are we gonna do with B, can we...
I don't, they, I know they need it, it's, it's very important, um...
I think it's related to the contract at all, even though it's the same property?
We have a deadline on that, Bob?
It's not related to the contract, it's related to getting electricity to our park.
I just don't want to...
So it's independent from the contract, totally, it's, it's, it's payment to EverSource.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Yeah, I think you're fine on that, this has absolutely nothing to do with the contract with our.
Okay, then I will...
So, Joyce, you're gonna move, uh, Item B under the consent agenda?
I, I just want to consult with Tracy first, so it's okay to, to approve that?
Yeah, Bob thinks it is, it, it isn't related, it's just on the same parcel, so I didn't know if it was connected, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, I move to approve Consent Agenda, Item B, Request for Approval of Riverwalk Park, EverSource Eastman.
I'll second that, all those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Passes by a three zero vote. So I think we got everything. We're gonna defer on the minutes. Do we have any important Town Administrator updates we gotta talk about?
I, I know it's late, and I can just do a couple real quick, I, I want to tell you, I have a report that I'm gonna be providing you that was from the Hyannis Park Civic Association on some of the, they have a grant to study PFAS in the Mill Creek area, and we're also working with the town's water PFAS consultant to help track these point source from the airport and the Barnstable training facility, so look for that report, and I'll, I'll send it to you, and then we're gonna have additional discussions of that in the future. And then, we're going to have additional discussions of that in the future. And I wanted to let the board know too, that last week, the Affordable Housing Trust set aside those funds. We had discussed this for the study of the impacts of short-term rentals in Yarmouth on affordable housing. And there's a meeting on July 16, if any, it's at 3:00 PM. And the trust is going to be meeting with the Collins Center, who performed that similar study in Provincetown. And any board members, if you're interested, can zoom into that or attend, and we'll try to move that along. And I just, also, for the sake of the public, wanted to make sure. I sent a note along too, from our public safety team, the Seagull Beach Lot, again, this year is going to be closed the 4th of July weekend at 8:00 PM, to protect the nesting shore birds and keep the fireworks and parties off of Seagull Beach. That has been a source of problems in the past. And that's it for Town Administrator.
Short and sweet.
Good. Let's have motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all adjourned.